Okay, well, we're ready when you are. Push the button. Good evening, this is the December 2nd regular meeting of the Malibu City Council. Call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please. Sometimes we think we're the city council. Planning Commission meeting, regular planning commission meeting. December 2nd, 2019. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Hill.
President.
Commissioner Euring.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
You have a quorum with Commissioner Marx absent.
Thank you. Trevor, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And let the record reflect that Commissioner Marx has arrived.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, but I have a question of Trevor first. There's one item, 5B, to be continued, but it says the subject application longer requires a public hearing. So, why would I continue?
Due to a date uncertain and if it needs to be renoticed?
Right, yeah, the recommendation is a date uncertain.
But my question is...
If it doesn't require a hearing, then they would just, uh, it would just never actually come back?
Okay.
Yes.
Makes no sense, but I move we continue all items as staff recommends with 5B continued to a date uncertain.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous. Uh, report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November 21st, 2019.
Okay, uh, where it takes us to item two. Oh, I'm sorry, Ceremonials and Presentation is the staff update on the Woolsey Fire rebuild process. Richard, almost passed you there.
Good evening Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. I'll give you a quick update of where we are. We currently have 10 single-family residences under planning review, and 188 residences have been approved by the Planning Department, and the Building and Safety Department has issued 44 building permits for single-family homes. Uh, we're nearing construction on some of the ones that started, uh, back in, I think it was, uh, May, March timeframe, or April, excuse me. Uh, but however, none have been finalled. This is just a little bit more information on what the Planning Department has approved. It's 188 residences, we're looking for a total of 473. That would be what we believe to be damaged or destroyed by the fire. We've also approved 29 second units and 112 accessory structures. This graph here shows the types of applications and the months in which we've received them. Uh, what you can take away from this, though, is you could see the majority of the applications have been for planning verifications. Uh, those are the light color blue line there that are drastically higher than the others. And we are starting to see a slowdown, I don't know if it's because of the holiday. As, uh, in November, we had Thanksgiving, now we're coming up on, um, the December holidays, and so that could be the explanation, but, um, the number of PVs has dropped, and the number of administrative plan reviews still is remaining relatively constant. We've waived $1.3 million worth of fees to date. Uh, that's, uh, by waiving, I mean both issued refunds and fees we have not charged to applicants as they come in. And once again, these, uh, fee waivers are available for the homeowner who lived in the home at the time of the fire. The Building and Safety Department, as we mentioned before, issued 44 permits to allow for construction of new single-family homes. They have another 49 homes that are in the building plan check phase, and there are 95 applications that they've made contact with but have not yet been submitted to the city for review during a plan check. I'm available for any questions if there are any.
Excuse me. Questions for, uh, for Richard?
Uh, I read in the paper that, uh, state has exempted, uh, uh, solar panels from burnouts. Is that correct? Everything, is there any other, um, major change in the, uh, building permit process that's gonna come into effect January 1st?
I'll have to confer with our building official, um, to get you an answer on that so we can work on an answer for the next meeting, to find out what code changes, if any, would affect the rebuilds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard, I appreciate, uh, the information. I'm, I'm glad to see that we appear to be, um, removing, or moving forward, breaking up a little bit of the logjam on the process, and that's very encouraging. Written and oral communications from the public, do we have any slips? Nothing? Okay. Planning Commission and staff comments in inquiries, planning commissioners?
Yeah, one. Sometime in January, La Paz is coming in front of us. And there's an item on the next city council agenda which, under which the city's gonna accept the deed from La Paz and whatever else is gonna go on in it, because I, I haven't seen the agenda report. But what does that mean in terms of, they're gonna come in front of us in January, that action by the city council in December, does that restrict anything we can do in, in January?
No, under the development agreement, they require to turn over parcel C and $500,000, and this would be the city accepting that. They already have an approved CDP for this. What's coming before you is a proposed amendment to the CDP to make some changes to the project. So, uh...
Okay, and what are those changes? I mean, I mean, here's the question, the question is this. Shouldn't we wait until we see what they're coming in front of us with and what we decide before we sort of close this deal by accepting the grant, the deed and all the rest of that? I mean, who made the decision to do that in December versus waiting until January? Is that a city council decision to do that?
It's, it's, it's been an item to come back to the city council for some time.
Right.
The point is that it would come through, um, so that it would be taken care of, so if the La Paz project is resolved, then all the, then all of the, the requirements of the development agreement would have been met at the time that the project is, uh, is approved or, or dealt with by the, by the Planning Commission and the city council.
But, okay, what you just said, the, the project's approved, so whatever we do, does...
They, I mean, they can go, they can go start construction today if they want on...
I understand that, but they're coming, they want something.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I don't know what they want, but it seems to me if they want something, we should wait until we see what they want and what we decide we should do with it before we close this thing off. No?
Well, the, the terms of the development agreement will not be before the Planning Commission, I don't know if that helps answer your question, but what the city council approved and, and, um, established in terms of the parameters of the development agreement would not be part of the amendment. The amendment consists primarily of, um, superficial changes to the project dealing with, um, how some of the buildings are sighted, um, the proportion of, uh, if I remember correctly, office to retail and some things like that, but it would not affect anything to do with, um, the public benefits that the, um...
I'm not worried about the public benefits, I'm just sort of saying that, you know, if they, they're coming in looking for changes to the agreement, right?
No, not the agreement, to the, as, basically the, um...
The project.
The project, okay.
To the coastal development permit aspects of the project, which is not the same as the development agreement.
And accepting parcel C and the $500,000 would not require, um, certain, any action on the proposed amendment, that is not required. If, if that's approved, it doesn't mean that the city has to approve the proposed amendment to the, um, proposed project, that travels separately.
Strange, okay.
We've seen several administrative permits for wells, uh, recently and, and tonight on consent, and it got me wondering about what, if anything, we're doing in terms of potential cumulative impacts. In Southern California, south of Palos Verdes, there are a lot of areas of subsidence, and in the Santa Clara River Delta area, Camarillo, Oxnard, there are a lot of areas of subsidence. And we here are in a more, um, solid geological structure, more integrated rock, but I'd imagine there must be pockets that might be sus- susceptible to some kind of subsidence. So I'm just wondering, and I don't know if this is for Richard or Bonnie, but, um, when we issue the permits for the wells, do we look at the cumulative impact? Do we, are, do we have, are we keeping track of the aquifers? Are we, what, what do we do that...
One of the seminal requirements for, um, a water well is a report by a geotechnical expert that deals with, um, environmental effects including cumulative impacts.
Do we have that registered or any sort of map or database of what the groundwater is in various places of the city?
No, no, the Planning Department does not have that information.
Okay.
John?
Since it's our last meeting, I just wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas.
And a follow-up from that, uh, Happy Thanksgiving from last time. That's it from me.
Okay.
And a Happy New Year.
Right.
I have a couple of items, I don't know if you had any.
Go Bonnie.
Um, I just wanted to make a couple of announcements, I wanted to remind everybody that the city council will have a special meeting tomorrow night to, um, address short-term rentals. There will be a draft ordinance in front of the council, um, so that's tomorrow, Tuesday night. The meeting will start early because we typically had a lot of speakers, so it will start 5:00 PM, um, in this room. The next regular meeting of the city council on December 9th will include, um, a, an item on, a ban on rodenticides. This is something that came before the Planning Commission some time ago, and so, um, the, a discussion of options and a potential ordinance will be before the council on, um, a week from tonight. Um, and then as, uh, just a follow-up to a couple of recent items the council has, um, addressed, the council did adopt the, um, ordinance proposed by staff to, um, augment the, uh, code enforcement tools that our code enforcement staff has for, um, enforcement against violations of local coastal program items and CDP violations, things like that. So that, uh, that should be very helpful to our code enforcement team. The council also approved the farmers market and Westward Beach amendments, um, those will require a second reading still. And then, also wanted to mention that, um, the next meeting of the Planning Commission will be on Monday, January 6th, so this is our last meeting of 2019, and, uh, happy holidays to everybody. Um, January 6th will be a very full agenda, and, uh, so, hope everybody gets a lot of rest of the holidays.
You're just punishing us for taking December wrong. Um, John?
Bonnie, your new tools on, um, code compliance, we have one item on the agenda that's, was cited 18 years ago. Is this gonna help you find those things?
The, the main point of the, um, ordinance is to, um, increase the, the number of different measures that the code enforcement team can take. Right now, in order to enforce against an LCP violation, um, you basically have to go to court, and under, um, the new ordinance, um, the code enforcement officers will be able to utilize same tools that you can use under the municipal code, which involves issuing citations and, um, criminal prosecution, misdemeanor criminal prosecution and things like that. So that's basically the, it's not gonna, um, change the way things are investigated, it's, it's a matter of the tools that can be used.
So, so as it stands now, you get cited in 2001 and basically we can't do anything until this new law comes in. These are actual buildings. I'm just wondering, is that the way it stands today? Just go ahead and build it and see if they tell you to tear it down?
No, I mean, if you violate the building code, then you're, you can, you're subject to code enforcement.
Yeah, so my question is, is there anything that picks up all these old ones?
The, the code enforcement team is working on, um, the whole, they have a whole, um...
Bunch.
Yeah, caseload of, of older violations that they're working through.
Okay. Comments, okay. That brings us to the consent calendar. Uh, anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar, please? Nothing, can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
Move this consent calendar be accepted as staff recommends.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, it passes unanimously. That brings us to... I'm sorry. Yes, we did. Now, this is on item 3A1, on which we have held two public hearings in the past. Sorry? Well, let's, yeah, we're gonna have to, um, now we're gonna get out of this, Trevor? Undo what we just did?
Why don't we just redo it, so why don't we move the balance of the consent calendar and then, with the new motion, and then pull it through item 3A1?
Okay, so we're gonna pull item 3A, let's get, can we have a motion on the balance?
I move the, uh, consent calendar with the exception of item 3A1.
Thank you, and the second?
I'll second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, all right, now. I'm not inclined to, uh, open a public hearing, an additional public hearing on this item. Sometimes, uh, there'd be a book written about how much time we spend on the 700 square foot addition, but, but, um, is, is a, is a public hearing required? Is it required to allow public speaking on this item?
We should allow the people to comment about any item on the agenda, so they should be able to make a comment on it. In this case, it would be limited to, I believe, was brought back for a calculation to see if the house size had changed, since the, the math was verified at the last hearing and now we're down to whether the actual size of the project was correct, um, as calculated by staff. So that would be the limit of, um, the subject before a public hearing.
All right. Then the first speaker will be...
We have a, do you want a staff report or disclosures before we open?
Um, I guess we should, all right, let's have a staff report on 3A, please.
And the item you have before you is CDP number 18002 for the project located at 20238 Pier de Chica Road. On November 4th of 2019, the Planning Commission directed staff to provide further clarification regarding the total gross floor area of the residence as existed prior to July 6th, 1968. Staff has confirmed through historical aerial photographs, tax assessor records, and the 2016 wet stamp site survey that the existing square footage prior to 1968 is 3,078 square feet, which would allow for a 770 square foot addition. Pictured here are historical aerial photographs, the first in the left-hand corner dated September 10th, 1967, um, although a little blurry on the PowerPoint, when you access it, um, via your desktop, you can clearly see, um, the outline of the house, um, as shown as well in November 1993 and October 21st, 2019, that there's been no change to the existing footprint. Above is the tax assessor records that are dated 1967, which also indicate that the footprint is consistent with the aerial photographs shown prior. Additionally, the 2016 site survey is consistent with both the aerial photographs and the 1967 tax assessor records, demonstrating the building footprint and gross floor area of the residence has not been altered. Based on staff's analysis of the documents prior to 1968, the total gross floor area of the residence is 3,078 square feet. The gross floor area does not include the entryway or the covered porch, which is not highlighted in yellow, uh, in the photo. Based on the total gross floor area of the residence, the allowable addition size would be 769.5 square feet. Pictured here is the proposed addition, um, the square footage circled in red, the square footage is within the allowable 25% limitation, um, as rounded up to 770 square feet. However, the applicant has submitted correspondence requesting the addition be reduced to 769.3 square feet as a condition of approval. In summary, um, staff recommends to adopt resolution number 1925 approving CDP 18002 as consistent with all the findings and determinations made on the October 21st Planning Commission meeting. I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Okay. Um, just a second. All right, John, go ahead, what's your question?
Um, normally, I think the city has a policy of rounding, and in this case you didn't round, so is there a reason for that?
The building official did round up, which is the allowable 770 square feet, and so they rounded up, the addition is, I believe, 769.6, so they rounded up to the 770.
The applicant...
I heard you wrong, it got, you didn't change the application, the applicant did?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other, uh, uh, disclosures you wanna make, gentlemen? Nothing?
Yeah, I, I'll disclose that I had a conversation with, um, Christopher Cunningham in the neighborhood, uh, he showed me some code sections about how to interpret the definition of gross floor area, and I'll talk about some depending, I don't know, I don't know if he's here, maybe we'll hear from him.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing at this point. First speaker will be Joe Drummond.
Hi, happy holidays. I guess, I, am I allowed to ask a question of you guys?
You can ask a question, but we will have to wait until the conclusion of the speakers before we answer it.
Okay, you'll have to, okay. Well, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to, because of the, Christopher's gonna talk about the codes, and what I'm not understanding, or what some of us aren't understanding, is how everything in this application, we use the codes recognized for planning and zoning, but when we're discussing the gross floor area, we're suddenly jumping to California building codes. And, which are less restrictive on the gross floor area count, but if we talk about, which we're not, geology and safety factors, they are more restrictive. So my question is, if we're applying California building codes to determine gross floor area, then why is planning not considering the same when it comes to the geology? Like, what, like, those are there to protect us, even the applicants, not just us, the, the neighbors. I'm not gonna get into too, I mean, we know if there's movement somewhere, that's, the safety factor is 1.0 or close to it, and the threshold is 1.5, so if this code that your 1, 1, 0, .2, .3, .4, and all the codes above it state that you have to have a threshold of that, that, but then you sign a waiver, that's where I don't understand why for gross floor area we say, well, forget planning and zoning, but for this, we're like, yeah, you have to, you can sign that waiver and forget about everything else, when... Anyway. So, either way, this case is gonna go to city council, we know that. So, so that the council members don't enter this conversation lightly, we, you guys know all of our concerns. We hope that you, very knowledgeable esteemed commissioners, can err on the side of caution when it comes to this application and consider how those codes are being applied. Whoa. How can the city geologists and building officials sign off on this when the safety factor's low? How low are all these waivers? We've asked that before. The codes, we, we know both geologists on both sides have confirmed the safety factor, so I just, everything is based on a 28-year-old Bing In report, and I just, I just want, I hope that for the applicant state and our state, you guys would consider everything.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond.
Thank you.
Rosemary Ide?
Rosemary Ide, I live next door to the, uh, project. This is a very sensitive area. The home had about 10 different owners, so you wonder why. Lot 10? No, it's lot 8, has no percolation, no whatsoever, and hasn't had it in, in all the time. I have lived there over 43 years, my husband over 50 years. I have some information about a previous application from somewhere else, and there's, like Joe said, there's a history of movement and non-percolation on both lots. We recently had our septic tank pumped, and it's full again, so it's basically not working. We don't know it has to do with the pump in our street, because I, I hear the pump at night, early in the morning, when I go out with the dogs. It's quiet, and I haven't heard it for months now. So anyway, during rainy season, lot 8, which is this lot, what this building would be structure, becomes a swamp land after heavy rains. And, um, I guess that's why they put caissons in, so it can float on the caissons or something. Is that correct? That's what the plan said. That area, before that was developed, it was the East Malibu Water Company, that's what I was told by people who have lived there in the 30s and 40s, so this is something to consider. Uh, the previous owner of both lots and the house and the lot, he tried to remodel, and when I was at the city council, city hall, and the health department, I had the plan, and I looked at the plan, and there was a fellow next to me, I didn't know, but he said, "Oh, you cannot build on that lot." And then I realized his name was a quite a well-known pumping company, or, um, seepage building company, maybe I better not say the name, but I was kind of shocked. So I tried to get in touch with him later on, and I was not able to, he wouldn't take my phone calls. Anyway, um, we get, of course, the surplus of the water, we're below, water flows with gravity, and it ends up below our houses. Oh, another thing, there was a time when they had the water underneath the house, the existing structure, before the, the new, newer septic system was built in, and the water would come down from the other higher lot and would drain underneath the house. And so that's why the pumping company built a ditch with pumps in it, and it flows out to Pier de Chica.
Thank you.
So I thought this is important.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Christopher Cunningham? Christopher Cunningham, we've got three speakers, first of all, Jürgen Kords, is he here? And Colin Drummond? And Gerhard Ide? Okay, six minutes.
Good evening Chair Jennings, Commissioners. Um, I'm gonna focus my attention on my comments on the gross floor area determination. Um, after reviewing the commission agenda report, um, I noticed that, um, the report, the staff report references the city planning, that the city planning is using, references section 110.2.3.4 from the California Building Code. And yet, in the sections of the, of the 2016 California Building Code that the city has adopted, there appears to be no section 1.110.2.3.4 that I can see. There is, however, in the Los Angeles County Code, a section 110.2.2.3.4 section, and I think, you know, that is the LA County Code Title 26 Building Code, section 110.2.3.4 that you can see in the report, but it's actually a Los Angeles code and not the, the, uh, the state code. state code. So in this, why this makes a difference is that if, if it does not make sense to use the definition of gross floor area in chapter two of the 2016 California Building Code, when a definition, definition already exists in the Los Angeles County Code, Title 22, Section 22.04.050. And there's also a definition in the Malibu Municipal Code, Section 17.02.06. And both define gross floor area to exclude the garages. So if you were to take the California Code, the California State Code, and apply it to the section that I was talking about, the 110.2.3.4 of the LA County Code, then essentially you will, you would have two conflicting definitions within the Los Angeles County Code. So to kind of help reconcile this, I actually called the LA County Deputy Counsel today, Carol Suzuki. And she used this analogy. She said, when you look at LA County, LA County, any counties in the state of California, think of it, think of those as marbles within a fishbowl. The counties are the marbles, and then the state code is the water, if you're adding the water in, and it should fill in the gaps to the, the LA County Code. Well, in this case, it makes sense, it seems illogical that the city would use two different definitions for the zoning and building, and would seem that only one definition would apply. And since the LA County Code, the Title 22 zoning, does in fact define gross floor area, then it makes sense and would be internally, internally consistent that this is the definition to be used if the city is applying the LA County Code 110.2.3.4, which references the gross floor area. So furthermore, when you look at the LA County Code Title Section, Title 22, it specifically says that, except in such particulars or matters as this title is more restrictive than such other ordinances or part thereof, you know, I think the building official could interpret that the state code could override the, the LA County Code, but for the fact that the LA, LA County Code defining gross floor area is actually more restrictive in that it excludes the garage, therefore, the LA County Code definition of gross floor area would apply, I would think. So that's, essence, what I wanted to share with the group.
Thank you very much.
I'll speak very briefly on the code, just to answer what was previously said. And this was addressed by Ms. Bundy, the building official, who explained to us all in the last meeting how the building code works. The city Malibu adopts a building code. They chose the LA County Building Code as the reference code with amendments, and those amendments are published. Anything that's not specifically amended by the city defaults to the county building code. The county building code does the same thing. It, it adopts the state building code with amendments. So it's a very clear chain, Malibu to county to city. It's, Ms. Bundy explained it very well. She had the book, explained with the colors, how the, how the codebook is put together. There is no conflict with the code. We default, the, this is, the 25% is a building code limitation. Building code applies. Planning code and building code are always separate. It's anybody who is a professional in the building industry knows you all, whenever you design a project, you have to meet multiple different codes. Sometimes they have conflicts. This instance, there's no conflict. So that's my only statement. If there's any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public, almost hearing none. Norm?
I have a comment. Thank you for the opportunity to, to make the following statement. There's very little that we do in life that doesn't have risk associated with it. I think the primary issue is whether or not the risk is to life and health of a person. With regard to the big rock area, everybody acknowledges that there, that there is a chance that that area can move. And if it does, there's a chance that foundations may break, may crack, but no one's going to die. No one's going to break their leg. It's not going to be a total disaster. And so we give people the right to take a certain level of risk, especially when everyone in the same area has agreed to take the same level of risk. That, in fact, is the requirement for a variance. And that's what I think is appropriate in this case. If there is a failure, and there might be, it, it's not going to be a physical failure in terms of hurting a person's, you know, body, mind, legs, arms. They may have to vacate the property, but there'll be plenty of time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on this item? Now hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission I think the first point is that at our last hearing on this matter, we asked the staff to confirm or provide an explanation of the application of the various codes. So I think that our issue is limited to whether the staff, the staff explanation is the appropriate one. I know that this is one that's, this is obviously a matter that's going to be, carries great emotion with it, and I, I believe Ms. Drummond is probably correct, we are not the last body that's going to rule on this. Is there comments? A motion perhaps? Yes?
There are a lot of layers to this. Let me start out with the first one, just to say that the resolution finding D1 cannot be made. Specifically, it states that evidence in the record demonstrates that the project will neither be subject to nor increase the instability of the site, of the site from geologic flood or fire hazards. The evidence in the record does not demonstrate that. There's plenty of evidence, there's a pattern of observations that confirm the theory of a local perched condition or tend to confirm it. I could run down a list of those things. One would be inclined to vote no, just on that, not being able to meet that finding. I think we have, we've learned up here that we don't necessarily like voting no if there's a way to cure something. And in that case, it would imply a continuance to develop a whole bunch of data, and I could run down a list of what that, what kinds of information we want to see to confirm whether or not that perched condition exists and whether or not we could make that finding So that sort of underlies the comments. And then what I've learned this weekend, and I tried to talk to Yolanda Bundy today, apparently she's pretty busy running around doing site visits and was not able to get back to me, but we've got some of the code out here. Basically, to, if I can sort of clarify or underscore what we've heard so far, the Malibu Municipal Code points in the first instance to the LA County Code for the building code. The LA County Code then adopts portions, large portions of the California Code into it, but the jurisdiction of first instance is the LA County. And in LA County, we have no definition of gross floor area in the building code, other than what's said in the state code that adopts it. But in the LA jurisdiction, we do have a definition of gross floor area in the planning and zoning code. So to my mind, and I think others, it would make no sense if the planning in the building had different definitions of what's permissible. So that, to me, does represent a, a conflict. And then if we look at the Malibu Code, it says, if there is any conflict between the Malibu, the county, or the, and, and/or the state, we look to the latest code that exists. And in this case, the LA County Code, the LA County is newer than the 2016 state code, which is about to be revised. So that would again underscore the definition of gross floor area as not counting the garage. Also, the, for what it's worth, and it just underscores the conflict, but isn't, doesn't add any precedential weight, the Malibu Code also doesn't count the garage. And then on top of that, there's yet another layer in the county code that says, and this is county Title 22 dot 04 dot 020. And Christopher alluded to this, that the LA County Code, what's the word? I don't want to say it defaults to, but in adopting the state code, that's what you go with, unless the county code is more restrictive. This specifically, except in such particulars or matter as this title is more restrictive than, et cetera. So that again suggests that you would say, you go with the county definition, the more restrictive definition. So just on the, on the, the discussion of what we use to measure it, it seems pretty clear that all those different contingent codes point back to using the more restrictive definition and, and newer definition.
Okay, well, is this leading to a motion to deny the staff recommendation?
It is. And I don't know if we're, we're ripe for that, if other people have stuff they want to contribute, or should I make that motion?
Let's see where it goes. Yes, you can make that motion if that's your thinking.
Now, I'm not sure how to do it procedurally. If, if, I, I see that finding, what was it, D1 that I just mentioned earlier can't be made. I don't know if we want to include that as part of the motion and/or also the, the definition of gross floor area.
Commissioner Hill, I do want to clarify that it would be improper to use the planning code for the building code definition. That code has its own definition of gross floor area, and that's what needs to be used for determinations that are subject to the building code. So I just want to make that clear before your motion's made.
I, I would suggest that in the lack of a, any other code of gross floor area, the jurisdiction we're referred to by the city code is in the first instance, the county code. That's what we're referred to.
It's not proper to mix zoning and building code definitions. It's just not. And the-
Can't do it.
The building official has a jurisdiction here on the geotechnical code question about how to make that calculation. She has made the determination, she's stated it in person and in writing. It's just incorrect to do it the way you're proposing. And if the other commissioners agree, then, then that's fine. We should just, just, the commission should certainly act on this and move on, but, but that's just not correct.
It, it might not be incidental to point out that they do things distinctly differently in Ventura City, City of Ventura.
Okay. Let's not argue it further. Let's see if there's, if you've got support for where you want to go. The recommendation of the staff is to adopt the planning commission resolution. Your motion, I take it, would be to, to reject that recommendation and to deny the resolution and to direct staff to bring back a resolution denying the project.
On the basis of not meeting finding D1, and also not, I'm, I'm not sure how it was framed here, but the, the definition of the gross floor area.
Okay.
By the way, there's also another rationale where they don't quite make the measurement, even if you use the state code. I don't know if you want to hear that, too.
Well, let's see if you've got some support for where you're going, and then we can flush it out as we go. So is there a second to the motion? All right, is there a different motion? I'm going to move the staff recommendation. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second that.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I would point out, then, in terms of the measurement, that we don't have anything definite on the, the house size measurements. We're being pointed now to blurry aerial photographs and tax assessor data that's very muddy and internally inconsistent. On the graph, for example, let's see, I took some notes on this. There's a line marked as 21, or 29, but drawn as 26. There's a line specified as 5, that's drawn as 6. There are two lines of the same exact length, one is marked 19, one is marked 20. The staff themselves said they're not able to determine what method the county assessor's office used to make the, the floor size determination. I agree. And it's our custom and practice here, and our observations, that the county tax assessor data is notoriously unreliable. So I don't know, I mean, when I look at that, what I see as the most definite indicator of what we had in 1968 on July 6th, is this, the house sizes, the building permit is specific, and then it seems what the tax assessor came up with on the garage size looks pretty reliable, the 466. That's, that's easy enough to say, yeah, that looks right. But then that doesn't get us quite up to the number that they want right now without making some minor modification to their plan. And I have that number here somewhere, yeah. That gets you to a, the 25% number would get you to, instead of 770, it would get you to 758.
Right. And, and by the way, my, I would alter my motion a little bit to incorporate the suggestion of the applicant rounding the number down rather than up to 769. Is that acceptable to you, this is seconded?
Yeah, I was going to go the other way, but that's, that's fine. And Commissioner Hill, I, I understand your passion, you, you've been, done a lot of work on this one, okay?
I, I don't know that, I, I think maybe I had, I had a baseline of more knowledge in the first place.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you look up near, I mean, we're, we're talking about, what, 20 square feet? That's the difference. It just seems we've-
Well, my, my, my main concern is, is finding D1. I, I see a whole litany of things that suggest that the perched condition is likely true. All the evidence we've seen, I can run down that list if, I, I don't know that my job here is to sell my position, but-
And I'm not, I, I mean, I'm going to stick-
I don't think it's safe.
I'm going to, you know, look, other people have built, I'm in the process of saying, you know, people around have built the same sized houses, have done the same thing. I think it was, who was the geologist that the, you had?
Tom Kowalski.
Kowalski said, everybody's concerned about the water, everybody going to put one of these low-end drip systems, so everybody's participating, right? As opposed to sort of just hammering on this one guy. So I'm going to stick with my motion, and yes, I'll go with what you want, Jeff. I just want to comment that I do believe this is going to city council. We've kind of flogged it to death here, and we've, we've asked for definitions. I think staff knows exactly what needs to be defined when the appeal comes in, and that's the floating, the perching situation and the legal definitions. And I think they can come down to, with a focused staff report, definitive answer one way or the other for the city council. I don't think we can take it any further.
Rich Mark.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion. The couple of things I'd observe is just, when, when I read the, the reference code that we've all been talking about, it's talking, an engineering, geology, and/or soils report, it just does bug me that we're referring to a, a really detailed report, which is decades old, and we're talking about a project which is very specific. I, I'm not comfortable with the fact that the geology report that I saw was for a whole community, not for this one project. I think that's flawed personally, and I do think there's more risk than I think is right to accept. But then, in terms of what the code says, it is an engineering report. If, you know, it, it, it basically checks the box. This isn't a variance, this is just following the code. This is what is allowed. So Norm, in terms of your statement saying that this is, you know, show, you show out the variance, this isn't. This is just saying, if you're up to 25% in a geologically quasi-unstable area, however this, you know, Section 110 dot 2 dot 3 or 4 is. So I'm just trying to do what's fair. I think that this should be approved because it is following code, but I just think it was done the wrong way. I think we should add much more geology on this specific site so that we would all have the comfort that we're looking truly at a 1.5 instead of 1.0 or maybe 1.3. That, that's been my biggest issue with saying all the way through. So, you know, I just wanted to kind of put my, my thoughts on the table for where I stand on this.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Can we just-
I would like to quickly enumerate some problems that I think they want to address to get it on the record.
You really, you know, there is a record, but we do have a lot of things to get done tonight, and, and-
30 seconds?
Go ahead, 30 seconds.
The pattern of observation of the perched condition includes the ponding of water in the crawl space, the ponding in lot 8 under the trampoline, the leaching water on lot 2 that could only come from there, destabilization of the house on the site directly above, drilling on the site that observed- drilling on the site that observed by the IDs, where the water remained in the drill holes for weeks without draining. So, I think they need to do test bores on the perch to confirm its existence or deny it, and maybe do some dyes or other kind of markers, radiation markers, to study where that water is going or not going. Okay.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Can I just confirm, question Jennings, which level is the motion for? Was it with the proposed correction, reduction from the applicant?
With the proposed correction that the applicant made rounding down to seven sixty-nine rather than seven seventy.
Seven sixty-nine, is that right? Okay. And is that correct, Commissioner Euring?
Yeah. As long as, yes, I'm with that.
What, what is the city standard on rounding, up or down?
According to the building official, he would have rounded up, which would have allowed it to be the seven seventy, but the applicant is erring on the side of...
May I ask just one quick question? If, if we round it down, do you have to do more work? Is that, what, what happens to your, doesn't impact you? Done, okay, I'm with...
So, I hope you change your motion to the standard, which is rounding up.
Okay, I'm willing to do that. I'll change it back to the standard, which is rounding up. You'll do the same, all right? That makes, you're happy?
Seven seventy, then, right?
Now, can we get a roll call, though?
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Marks?
No.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two. That concludes item three A. We're now at item five A. Five A is Coastal Development Permit Number nineteen dash oh-one-eight with a variance. Uh, this is the application of construction of roadway improvements and associated development along Civic Center Way. Can we, as soon as the road clears a little bit, can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is an identified capital improvement project authorized by the city council and funded by Measure R with LA County Metro. Over the past two years, the project was presented to the city council, Public Works Commission, Public Safety Commission, and the public at a community meeting. The final project plans that are included in the agenda report packet are designed based on feedback and direction received from those meetings. The project involves construction of roadway improvements along Civic Center Way from Malibu Canyon Road over here to Webway, along Webway, and on small portions of the Malibu Memorial Park parcel, the wastewater treatment plant parcel, and the city-owned Triangle parcel. The project includes two variances, one for construction within the ESHA buffer and one for retaining wall in excess of six feet in height. The boundary of the environmental study limits is outlined in red on this aerial map. The project consists of widening and straightening the curvature of the roadway, installing sidewalks, a new bike lane, landscaping, safety fencing, water quality treatment devices, and traffic control signage, and adding a turn lane from Civic Center Way to Webway over here. These improvements will provide for all modes of travel and connect several major resident and visitor activity centers and coastal resource areas, including parks, the beach, Pepperdine University, the planned Santa Monica College campus, restaurants, and shopping. The project involves removing blind curves and hills that prevent drivers from being able to see out into the distance and also adding sidewalks and bike lanes. As currently pedestrians and cyclists walk or bike in the vehicle travel lanes or on the unimproved shoulder. A photograph of existing conditions and a rendering of proposed improvements are shown here. The installation of walkways here and bikeways would separate pedestrians and cyclists from the flow of vehicular traffic and improve safety for all modes of travel. Collectively, these improvements would serve to improve traffic flow and promote active transportation. I'll note that subsequent to the preparation of this rendering, the landscape plan has been changed to match the landscaping at Legacy Park and also include native plants and trees. And the sidewalks will be made of colored concrete to blend with the natural environment. So, on the south side of Civic Center Way, a new sidewalk is proposed between the bus stops on Malibu Canyon Road and Winter Canyon Road. And you can see here, there's, there's no sidewalk in that area. Um, and the proposed sidewalk would continue along the south side of Civic Center Way up to Winter Canyon Road. And at this point, pedestrians can cross the street to the north side of Civic Center Way. And this is where a connecting sidewalk on the north side of Civic Center Way from Winter Canyon Road to Webway would allow pedestrians to travel safely along the entire length of the roadway. This sidewalk was added later in the design stage per direction from city council. As showed in this photo, this portion is constrained by a blind hill and limited land on both sides of the road. So, to the north is a steep slope and existing development, and to the south is repairian ESHA, which isn't shown here, but it is to, um, to the south of, of the road. A one-hundred-and-twenty, eighty, or, excuse me, a two-hundred-and-eighty-foot-long retaining wall on the north side is proposed to accommodate the roadway widening and sidewalk and to improve visibility and is needed to reduce encroachment into the residential development to the north and the ESHA on the south. The retaining wall would be eight-and-a-half feet high with a one-foot concrete coping and a three-and-a-half-foot safety railing, and a variance is requested to, um, to construct this proposed retaining wall. This image shows an aerial view of the same locations. We hear the condos, this is the ESHA shown in blue. And the ESHA buffer is shown in this hatched blue line here. So, as you can see, the, the ESHA buffer extends across the entire width of Civic Center Way and into the adjacent slopes to the north. Um, and there's no way to avoid encroachment into the ESHA buffer as it's already disturbed, and it includes the entire roadway width of Civic Center Way. Grading would take place closer to the ESHA, but not in the ESHA, than what is currently existing, but the pavement would not extend any closer to the ESHA than, than existing conditions. The second ESHA that requires a variance is on the north side of Civic Center Way, slightly further east on the property that is referred to as the Smith property. The ESHA variance, the ESHA buffer variance would also allow continued encroachment into the ESHA of, uh, shown here in orange. Um, and here again, the ESHA buffer extends across the entire width of Civic Center Way, and there is no way to make improvements to the roadway without doing work within the ESHA buffer. Here, the buffer is, um, the buffer area is already disturbed and, um, and would, and the project would not, excuse me, the project would not encroach any further into the ESHA than existing conditions. So, this is a photograph of that area showing the location of the proposed sidewalk curb gutter and, and also a wildlife permeable fencing. Um, as you can see here, there is a drop-off, so the fencing is required to prevent pedestrians from falling onto the slope, and it is designed to ensure wildlife permeability. This side of the roadway would be finished with a new curb and gutter. This is the planned view of the same area. So, this shows the eastern terminus of the project at the intersection of Civic Center Way and Webway. Um, again, the sidewalk on the north side of Civic Center Way is shown here and was added later in the, the design phase. Um, and again, the safety fencing is required to prevent pedestrians from falling into the slope on the north side. Uh, north, a new right-turn lane onto Webway is also proposed. And this is the city-owned Triangle property. Um, this site will be used for temporary staging, but it will also be used for a permanent right-of-way. So, prior to the construction of the project, this area will be dedicated as right-of-way and will be included as part of that, that right-turn lane. So, this, this shows the terminus of the existing sidewalk, and this is the location of the, the new right-turn lane. And here's a cross-section of that same area showing the right-turn lane here, the five-foot-wide bike lane, um, and vehicle travel lanes, and the sidewalk. Subsequent to the publication of the agenda report, we received several pieces of public correspondence. We received some, a couple email, course, emails from Commissioner Euring requesting a copy of the request for qualifications for the design of the project, as well as a copy of the grant application. And we received an email from Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth, and both of, um, all three of those should be included in, or should have been distributed to the planning commission. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval of CDP Number nineteen zero eighteen and both variances, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me ask this, is there going to be a separate presentation? Or Rob, are you going to make a separate presentation, or is that, is that the...
We hadn't planned on it, but Rob is very familiar and can answer any questions.
So, I'm here just to answer questions.
Okay, great. Let's have disclosures, please.
Up in Malibu Falls, I, for the last twenty-five years, I've driven that road more times than I want to think about.
I spoke to council members Pearson and Wagner. Uh, they both informed me, was apparent in the staff report, that this has gone around several times with city council in the past. Um, and, uh, Councilmember Wagner pointed out specifically that there, he told me the number is approximately forty. I don't remember it exactly, but about forty kids live in the condo units there that currently are walking to school on the dirt on the side of the road in the mud and thinks the sidewalk would be helpful for the, for the forty kids.
Tom?
I talked to Richard Day. Several questions on, uh, how it was constructed. Nothing that wasn't in the staff report, I later found. I drove up and down the road three times. I've driven there plenty of times. I also was at the hearing when the council decided to close the road.
No disclosures.
None for me. Okay, so, um, let's open the public hearing, get the public's take on this, and then we can get back and we can get all of our questions going. The first speaker will be, we're going to open the public hearing now. First que, speaker is going to be Merrill May. Merrill?
Hello, my name's Merrill May. I just want to thank you, the staff for the report and the effort to get this done. I want to...
Just Kathleen?
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead. So, I want to thank you for what I hope you will be in favor of, of the work that's going on here. I, I used to be a safety commissioner for the city of Malibu. I still continue to write suggestions about safety issues at this very spot by the Smith property. Uh, after city council meeting recently, there was two people in dark clothing walking out, a third out from the shoulder, that fortunately, I was looking dead ahead. So, I can't, and there may be forty kids that go to the condos, but there's also Pepperdine above this. So, over the years, I've requested the city cut brush back on the, the, what would be the south shoulder of the road, trying to even that off to make do with what could be so people could get out of the road. It's been a very dangerous hazard for many years. Uh, I was told that this project was coming along, yeah, after the wastewater treatment plant was in and all that was taken care of. So, I'm in great favor of this from a safety measure for our residents, for people that commute through here. I don't know what's going to happen with the speed limit. So, you know, as, as conservative as we can be regarding the speed limit, I think there might be some, uh, position there. Also, I don't know about lighting. Um, I know a friend of mine also mentioned to me that because we're going to have people walking, it's, it's sort of, the topography goes up and down and winding. I don't know whether there's a way to put in some, some night, uh, dark sky compliant lighting there to have a little lighting so people can see where they're going, so people can see if they're walking there. I guess that's it. I just think it's a great safety benefit to everybody that goes through there. And if we can control the speed so that we don't encourage people to go up that road, and maybe they stay on PCH when they're doing the zigzagging up to Malibu Canyon, that'd be great. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Merrill. Pat Healy?
Good evening, everyone. I, I was opposed, as were some other people who read the staff report, that there might be intrusion into the Smith Wetland property and also into the Bell property. The Smith Wetland is an ESHA. If I understood what was up on the projector before, it looks like staff is saying that there won't be any intrusion into the ESHA itself, that all the, um, the improvements would be on the existing road. I drove the road today, and it's a two-lane road. I don't see how that can happen and put in a bike lane and a walking path. So, I, I'm assuming there's still going to be some intrusion into the mapped ESHA. And the same, um, concern I have because there's an unmapped ESHA on the Bell property, and the, um, it's still not determined whether this is a, an ESHA wetland. And until the coastal commission hears the appeal, the slow growth is filed. No work should be done on that property either. And, um, I, I also have the feeling that, um, this is a very suburban, urban-looking project. It doesn't really fit Malibu's character. I'm not against having, you know, walking paths and things like that for safety, but it, um, I think it's a big mistake to not have it designed in a very engineered way rather than something that fits Malibu's rural character and mission and vision statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Norm Haney?
Good evening again, uh, planning commissioners, Norm Haney. I, uh, had some personal experiences driving on, uh, Civic Center Way as it, as I approached Malibu Canyon. It was very dark. People were wearing dark clothing. As I came around the bend towards Pepperdine, I, I don't know how I missed two people that were walking in the street, and I was very, very thankful that I did not hit them. Because as you come around, if there are two people right there, and they're in the street, and there's another car on the left-hand side, you can't move over, even if your reflexes are good. So, I'm very strongly in favor of this project. The, the one thing that, that I can support, uh, i- is that I, I think that if there were some way to make it a little more rural residential in, in the way in which it looks, however, I, I think that the public works went a long ways in using colored concrete for the sidewalk so that it blends in, and I'm sure they'll do the same thing on the retaining wall. So, I'm, I'm, I, um, I'm strongly in favor of this. I, I, it's, somebody's going to die there if, if this isn't done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norm. Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to address the commission on this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission table. Commissioner Euring?
I've got just a couple of questions and, and two procedural ones. As you come up Civic Center Way in front of the condos, right where the curve is, every two months, they're digging a hole and they're repairing something. You know what they're repairing in there?
I, I believe that's a water line the District Twenty-Nine is repairing. I think I've seen them a couple of times going out there and fixing that line.
Well, that, was, is that, I mean, they, every two months, they're out there. I mean, this is, this is, you can count, I mean, so long as your project gives them a chance to continue to do that, assuming they have to do that, I'm not sure what, what the problem was.
So, we reached out to them and kind of coordinated and let them know that we're doing this project, and if they need to get in there to do more repairs, then they'll do that during our construction to make sure... to make sure that doesn't happen in the future.
They could figure out not to make it happen in the future, you would think they would have done that already, but okay, another story. There's a park, a parking lot in front of Mason Deville condos. I don't know if you bring the picture up there. There's a bunch of cars that are parked off right off Civic Center Way. Is, is this project impact that?
So what's that, I, I believe what we're doing in that location is providing some, some angle parking for those residents in that area. So right now, there's a big shoulder area where they're parking perpendicular to the road, and, and we're going to make it to where it's an angled parking. So it's a little bit better coming in. You can probably, you can be able to park as you're going westbound on Civic Center and pull into the parking areas along that area. So it's not being eliminated, it's, it's just being reconfigured.
Okay. I've got, just, let me get back to the, the main stuff. I mean, I, I pulled the RFP and the grant thing, just sort of get a sense of where this thing started and what we were trying to do. And as a, what, what I learned from those two things, okay, was that the Timberly Horn, I guess, is the group that did the design, was going to go out and do some investigation. They were going to do some studies to make sure they understood what was going on. They were going to, the, the plan was to have this project reduce congestion on the corner of Malibu Canyon and Civic Center Way and provide some pedestrian walkways up and down. Now, let's just do it the pedestrian walkways. I mean, I, I drive there all the time, and, and you guys have seen more people walking there than I ever have. All right, I mean, so I don't know, I mean, when I look up at Pepperdine, from what I see there, you know, if, if they've got four or five kids, every, students every day walking up and down there, I would think that's a, it seems to me that's a lot. Because what Pepperdine does, they run shuttles, right? They've got a shuttle that goes from university to the stores. So most of the kids are either taking the shuttle or driving their own cars. I see very few of them walking. And the ones that I do see walking, if you go back to the prior picture that had, we had that little jag that comes out off of Civic Center Way, go back to an earlier version there, literally, if you could.
Parker, could you put the presentation back up, please?
You go back a slide or two, that's all I need. One more. There's, there's a little J, as you come down Civic Center Way going toward Webway, there's a little turn right now that you can, that you can take back on PCH, right? Okay? I mean, most of the people I see walking and trying to get to Ralph's, go to that thing and cross PCH right there. I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's what's going on there today. So I, I don't know how we address that or how you make that better. Did we talk to the people at Pepperdine at all about how many students might be using this walkway? Do we investigate, do we do that at all?
It's just a question about the design, I'd be happy to answer it. But how we're, how we're getting to this project and how we are here is, I mean, I'd be able to answer that, and...
I'm just wondering if we talked to, I mean, you know, there was supposed to be an investigation to see what was going, I'm just wondering if...
So if, if, if you're asking if there's been, if we looked at and see the...
No, I'm asking if we went to Pepperdine and said, okay, guys, we're going to build this thing, how many of your students you think will be using that?
No, we did not.
We did, huh?
No, we did not go to Pepperdine.
Do we do that for the condos?
Absolutely.
You did. And what was the response from there?
We've had several meetings with them. We've, they've stressed their desire to have this sidewalk, especially on the new location by, by the condos going up, making sure there is a, there is a nice pathway going from the condos, going all the way to school. They, they said that's very, that's, that's very important. So that was, so that was definitely brought to our attention during those meetings.
Gotcha. Okay, and, and I'm not, look, the improvements to the roadway, I agree with, right? I mean, there, you know, a bicycle lane, Saturday morning, I'm driving up the road, there's bicycles blocking, you know, oh, they do that every Saturday. So putting a bike lane, it would be a good idea. One of the, the objectives of this project was to clear up the congestion on the corner of Malibu Canyon Road and Civic Center Way. Is that a fair statement?
Uh, where are you getting that statement from?
That's from the, the, it was in the RFP, it was in the proposal for it funding, it was in, I think, I think maybe even, I don't know if it was in the staff report or not.
I, I, if you can tell me where they, where you found that, that'd be, that would be very helpful.
Well, okay. If I go to the RFP, I think it is, page... Page two, for the RFP. "The improvements shall improve traffic flow, promote active transportation, reduce incident delay, and reduce congestion at Malibu Canyon Road and the PCH intersection."
Right. So one of the elements on this project is, there's a high point right at this picture here that's causing a significant sight distance issue. If you're, if you...
Before we, before we get there, what is, what is currently, is that, is this what's currently causing the congestion at Malibu Canyon Road?
Can I, can I continue?
I'm just, make sure we're on the same path.
Can I continue?
Go right ahead.
Thanks. So, so one of the issues is the, is the sight distance in here. And, and so one of the, one of the ideas, and this was brought way back in initial of this project, was to lower that, that hump, straighten out the, the, the curve a little bit so you can have a better sight distance to improve, to improve the safety of that roadway, to make sure that vehicles, pedestrians, cyclists have, have a cleaner line of sight. And then that will improve congestion, you'll be able to see better, and that will, that will improve that, that corridor.
How, but how, how is it improving, how is it reducing? So you're saying that's what's causing the congestion at Malibu Canyon Road?
And I'm saying that's going to improve the, the traffic and the safety on this road.
Okay, Steve.
I just, one more.
I'm just going to interrupt for a second because we've closed the public hearing, but we have another speaker who's asked to be recognized. It's Ryan Embry who lives in that area. And with the indulgence of the commission, we can allow Ryan to have three minutes. Come up, Ryan.
Thank you. I have been in this area for thirty years. And so I was on the task force that came up with the five recommendations. And I wanted to commend the staff for putting together most of the elements, and especially this, the peak of Civic Center Way is a very big issue. And it does affect the cost because of this retaining wall that they're proposing to put in. Retaining wall, though, is partly the city's own doing because in not respecting the setback requirements for twenty-four thousand Civic Center Way, which is the address for the city's own treatment plant, it forced the improvements onto the north side. North side is where all the schoolchildren are, it's where all the property development is, it's where the four hundred residential people are living on that side. And we put in the hundred and eighty or hundred fifty thousand dollar traffic signal on, at Winter Canyon, which is a private road, at complete city expense. And that's where the crossing can occur for anybody who's walking down from Pepperdine to get onto the north side of the road. So I just wanted to say that the crosswalk, or say, a, a pedestrian path on the south side of Civic Center Way was never contemplated by the Civic Center Way task force. Didn't want pedestrians between PCH and Civic Center Way. There's no purpose for it, and it would encourage them to run across Pacific Coast Highway to get to Ralph's. And that is not what the safety people wanted who were appointed by the city council at the time in two thousand and four. And the report is where I was printing it, which came up with those items. And if you want to ask me any questions about the items, but that was in the report and identified by the city's traffic engineer at the time. And the angle parking in front of the condos is very essential to the residential abutting use, which predates cityhood and everything else. So I thank you very much for your involvement.
Thank you, Ryan.
Two last quick ones, Jeff, and I'll get up.
Back to you.
Okay. I want to go back to the congestion issue, okay? If I, if I get at the corner of Civic Center Way and, and, and Malibu Canyon, congestion there every day, what causes that congestion, do you think?
What, what does that have to do with this design? I'll probably answer, answer questions about that design, or you're, you're asking a broad question. What's causing congestion there?
At, at PCH, there's, there's, on, on the corner of Malibu Canyon Road and Civic Center Way, every day you go in there, there's congestion back. I'm just, what causes that today without this new road going in?
We're doing, we're doing safety improvements to the road.
Look, I'm not, I'm not arguing with the, the need for safety improvements. What I'm looking at, here's what's going to happen, okay?
I'm just trying to figure out a question you're, you have towards the design, or something I can have, have a answer.
What, what's going to happen is, okay, is this road is going to get improved, and more traffic is going to go on it, fair statement? More people will use it, probably?
I, I, I don't think so.
There would be different opportunities to, different modes of travel that could...
I'm just talking about cars, just talking about cars.
Well, people may choose to walk now or ride a bike instead of driving.
I'm not talking about the Pepperdine, I'm talking about the commuter traffic that comes up and down. Will more people use this road, do you think?
I, I, I can't say that.
You say, I didn't hear that, what?
I can't say that.
What do you think?
I don't know.
Well, but I mean, that's your public works guy. Here's the problem, okay? Traffic becomes at, at night, okay? Every afternoon from three o'clock to five o'clock, if you live on Malibu Canyon Road, you cannot get out of the roads, be it Harbor Vista, be it Malibu Crest, or be it Malibu Knowles Road. Because you've got the train, or the, the stream of cars coming out of Pepperdine, and you've got the other stream of cars that are coming up Civic Center Way, and there's no brakes, there are no traffic brakes, right? You don't, there's no light to slow anybody down or stop them. So you can't, it took me fifteen minutes to get out of Harbor Vista today, onto Malibu Canyon, to get down here. And when this gets done, it's going to get worse, all right? Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. All I'm saying is if you're building this road down here that's going to create another problem up there, why don't we have some solution in place to help deal with the problem we're creating up there? Isn't that, I mean...
Well, that's not part of the project. Part, the project here is, it's on here.
But if you're going to build a project that says that someone, I'm going to increase the problem up here, don't you think we, somehow in there, there should be some solution that says we can reduce, we're going to try and reduce that?
It's something that the city council could, you know, add to the capital improvements project list or, or, you know, consider addressing in the future.
And I understand all that, okay? There's a whole bunch of ways to get them. I guess my concern says, this is a public works project, all right? So I, I would think that the people doing it would recognize that if I'm doing something here and it's going to have an adverse impact on someplace up there, somebody would at least raise their hand to somebody, okay, and say, let's find another solution. Last one, and I'm done.
We get your point. But let's, is there somebody else who would like to come?
I got one more, and I'm done, okay? And I'm, this is a short one.
And you'll get your turn right after everybody else has had their turn. Commissioner Hill?
Okay, let me start with a quick question, just confirming. Is any of the Escher on the Smith or Bell going to be affected? It's, it's been sort of fuzzy so far.
So all the work is, is going to be done within the city's right-of-way? There's no private, there's no work that's going to be done on the private property?
Is there any Escher on the city right-of-way?
The...
I'm hearing yes up here.
Well, the specific questions that I was asking about this, it were, are the, is the paving going to go back exactly where it is today? And the answer I got was yes. So there's not going to be an encroachment of paving further towards the Escher on the Smith property or anything on the Bell property or on the treatment plant property.
Can we bring up whatever's the best image?
Deeper concerns.
Just a second. Can, can we bring up the best image just to talk it through? Because I had the same question, I, I thought a picture could help, whatever you think's a good one for that. Just to maybe use a pointer and say where that, yeah, where, where exactly...
No, not, not, that's not the Escher I'm concerned, I'm Smith and Bell.
This one?
There you go.
So maybe if you could just restate your question, kind of pointing to what, yeah. So, yeah, or specify what's going to happen where?
I, I think anywhere on the north side of that roadway is what we're talking about. And I think you just answered it, that yes, there is Escher in the right-of-way, but you think it, or you think no?
I don't know if there is Escher in the right-of-way or not, but the, the question was whether the, the boundary of the paving or any of the improvements was going to change relative to the sensitive resources, and the answer was no.
Okay. On this, on this point?
The, the south side of the road specifically was identified in the Memorial Park issue. And they had to pull back from Escher, and it went all the way down the slope, and there are specific restrictions in there about any development. We're putting a retaining wall on it.
There's actually a retaining wall that was proposed there as part of the Memorial Park project. I actually went back and checked the plans because I was, wanted to just see, because it's been a few years since we looked at that.
Number, number sixty-seven of their conditions, there's, can't be within twenty feet of it, any improvements.
Well, do we want to finish talking about this location first?
One at a time, let's, let some answers come back. What do you want to say, Bonnie?
I thought we'd maybe wrap up the Smith questions, and then we can...
All right, let's do that.
Okay, moving more, more broadly.
Just a second, let's, let's get the, the Smith answer if we can, from the staff.
So nothing is going to go further north than exists today? Meaning it won't go closer to any wetlands.
And no grading changes in that area? Just, it's just kind of repaving existing roads?
Well, it, it's going to get a new pavement and condition over there, so it'll, it'll be all new pavement. What we did is we're able to push everything south, all the, all the lanes, all the bike lanes, everything else, south, so make it, to make that work. And then luckily, we have, we have that vacant property over there where we need a little slipper to, to make it work, but we're able to make that work.
Just a second, Mr. Commissioner Hill, on this issue?
Yeah. No, I'm sorry, no, I'm, I'm good on that.
Okay, all right. John, on this issue?
Yeah, I just want, could you put up the slide that shows it where you pushed it over? There's a, there's a, a black line.
That one?
I thought you had a plan view of...
Yeah, yeah, a view that was, had a black line showed, where you showed your, your...
Is it this one? Oh, no, you just had, I think.
Well, the one we...
The intersection, yeah.
Okay, so it shows it, is it pushing over on the Bell property or not?
No.
It is?
No.
Okay, so you said, okay, so my question on that is, on page four of twenty-six, you show one, a twelve-foot, a twelve-foot, a twelve-foot, a twelve-foot, and a two-fives as, as a diagram. And that's forty-eight, that's fifty-eight feet. So is that that intersection?
So unfortunately, at this intersection, there's a transition to where there is, there is a shoulder area for a bike lane, not a, not a five-foot bike lane that's in this section here. That's, that was one of the trade-offs we had to, to consider here, is to reduce that bike lane and just make it a shoulder instead of a bike lane.
Now, the, the sidewalk, is that on the triangle side or on the Bell side?
No, it's, it's on the north side, it's on the Bell side.
Okay, and so it shows a bike in a twelve-foot lane, and, and, and that gives you six feet for a car, because the law, a bike's three feet wide, basically, and, and you have to stay three feet from the bike. So if there's a bike there, there's six feet for a car. How is that going to work?
So we had this all looked at, and, and there's, there is provisions to, if, if you want to put, share a lane with a bike and a, and a, and travel lane, you can do that. And there are certain requirements for that and certain whiffs, and we met all of those requirements.
Okay, so have we, have you exhausted your questions on the issue of whether the pavement is going to extend into the Bell property?
Well, I think, yeah, I think we're good on that, we're moving on to the triangle, we should add some more questions on this.
I've got, I've got stuff to say.
Before we get into a new subject, I want to go back to Mr. Euring, who's got his other question that I told him he could ask. You have one more.
Again, the.
Microphone?
Mike, the project says it's gonna clear up congestion at PCH and Malibu Canyon. And the only way I think it can do that is by forcing, or having more cars come up Civic Center Way up into Malibu Canyon, right? You're gonna move them out of there, and as a result, you're gonna create more havoc for the people living on Malibu Canyon. And I just think, without having somebody have raised their hand and sort of say, gee, was that the impact, you know, we, find a way to fix that, I think that's wrong. Last one is, you're, you're moving a stoplight, or a streetlight, and replacing it on this part of this project, is that correct?
I, I think what we're doing is, we're, we're moving a street signal, because it's, it's interfering with some of the sidewalk, and so we're relocating it a little bit, but it's the, it's the same signal, same lighting, everything's gonna be the same.
Streetlight, we're talking about, right?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the signal, and it has a streetlight on it.
Okay, I see.
So where's this, where's the streetlight you're moving, where, where's it located now?
It's, it's at the intersection of Civic Center and Winter Canyon.
Okay, so when you replace that light, considering the fact that we've got, we've got a project to make Malibu a dark sky community, have you got any plans to improve the lighting with that, to do that?
Improve the lighting as, as in to?
There's dark sky lighting for, for light bulbs.
So you'd be interested in like a warmer color temperature for that light?
I mean, I'll, I, fasten it down, that's, that's the, based upon Jim Benya, that is the requirement for dark sky lighting for streetlights. And all I'm saying is, if, if we're in the process of trying to come up with a dark sky program for Malibu, and we're replacing streetlights, it seems to me if I can replace them with stuff that makes it better, it doesn't cost anymore, makes.
Right.
Was this in the dark sky ordinance, or is this just his recommendation?
That's, that's his, when I got off, that's what he's doing in other cities, it's not in the ordinance right now.
This is available up here for anybody who wants to see it.
Our ordinance currently doesn't address streetlights, but if, it, it would be up to the, the budgeting of the project and whether it could be accommodated.
I mean, I could look what you have and see what we can accommodate, but I, I'll have to, I'll have to look, see what it is.
Are there any other questions relating specifically to the streetlight?
No, that's all we got.
Then, John, what's your?
My question's on that corner. This is the busiest corner in Malibu, it's not on Coast Island. Of any others that could possibly be busier. Now, we've apparently created a, right on that corner, a substandard lane with bikes in it. Now, we own the property, has anybody ever considered giving up three feet of the triangle property, so you can get a bike lane in there? Instead of having a share on the busiest corner in Malibu?
And, and similar concern.
It was a question that was asked, let's get the answer.
So, so the thought right now is, is to keep it at, at that location because of a future project that may happen there, but we can look into seeing if we could push it back farther, to make that, I mean, that's a good suggestion, that's something we can look into and see, but.
But can we, can we condition this project on full lanes?
It's, it's just additional funding and everything else that goes along with that too, that has some consequences to this project.
Make a note of the changes you, we wanna make, and we'll deal with, with the technical aspect when we get there.
I just wanna ask staff on that last statement, are we required to approve this within their budget? In other words, are we able to change anything, because apparently the budget is exactly what they have.
The budget's not really consideration for the commission, it's, it's gonna be looked at the same as if anybody else proposed this project.
Yeah, I just wanna add an observation, that bike lane that John's talking about, if we do have that on the outside of the car, since it's a right turn lane, I would just be concerned for the safety of the cyclist coming through that intersection. So it could also be tough for timing and bikes not be able, may not be able to get through with cars making a right, so I think that three feet that John's talking about on this side would be valuable.
Well, I believe that there is a little buffer, there's a little bike path that, that goes in between the right turn lane and the number one lane. So that's, so there is there, but if there's any, if there's any way to improve that, we'll, we'll look into it and see, and see it with, if we can do that within the budget, absolutely, I mean, anything we can see to make this better, I mean, we will, it's, it's just, we have, we have certain funds and.
Okay, so, let me, we, we can, we can talk about tweaking the plan, or changing the plan in one way or another, but let's talk about some of the things that are specifically within our Baileywood, namely the variances that are requested, does anybody would like to weigh in on the variance for the?
Chair Jennings, I'm sorry, I, I, first off, I have a couple of big thoughts, but is there any call to recognize Pat here, she seems to have a, no?
I'd just like to be recognized to say a couple of short things about the ESHA area, or the ESHA buffer area, whatever.
Pat, come on, if, if, if we let you do it, then everybody has to do it, we already got, we, we heard your testimony about the Bell, excuse me, Pat, please, please. If you have a question that you wish to ask Pat about.
There's willows on, there's willows on the Bell property that looks like.
Pat, come on, you know the rules, come on, you've been here a lot of times, you know the rules, please.
I know, but, but maybe destroying ESHA, that's all I'm saying.
It's gonna go back to the city council, you have an opportunity.
I have a.
Okay, I, can I?
I called on Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, that in the report, this, there's a deep sense of cart before the horse on a lot of this, I do agree that some of these features are, do seem really helpful. And I just, I'll put out a constructive idea right now in terms of the pathway, rural concept, general plan stuff, maybe a way to, to handle this, I think that people are laughing out there, I don't know what about, the colored concrete, instead of that, what if we called these not sidewalks, but pathways or paths, and had it DG? Like nice DG pathways, and you could have, answering Merrill's comment about the lighting, you could have the sort of low pedestrian cover, you know, whatever, two, three-foot-high lights along the side, so you could really see where you're going, but make it a DG pathway, like you see sometimes done with old disused railroad tracks that are turned into trails for bikes or whatever. So it, it's solid, you can walk on it, but it's not a, it's not a city-like concrete walkway, so that, that would be one comment. My other comment, my main comment, is, this is talking about, that the, a right-of-way will be dedicated in the triangle parcel by the time construction commences, and as I'm looking at this, you're talking about carving into the triangle parcel to create that legal right-of-way. The city council has made a robust recommendation to the public that we'll have a chance, the public will have a chance to weigh in on all the new parcels on their use and what they're gonna be used for, and, and I understand that there's some strong movement towards, with the measure our funds, towards making the triangle lot the, the parking lot, but there's also strong movement towards making a legal swap with some other parcel, people from, as disparate as Andy Lyon to Norm Haney have, have told me, that they don't wanna see that basically ground zero of Malibu, the center of the city there, be a bunch of parking lots in an empty field, left parks, that, that, that actually, that triangle should be more of the jewel of the city, and so when the council's talking about a visitor's center at their next meeting, maybe that would go on the side, or even the the fire department that they've talked about might be better there, so my concern is, if we're starting to carve off pieces of that triangle parcel, we are abrogating the duty and the promise to have, allow the public to have a say, to the extent that we might be precluding potential uses of that site by making it smaller. So while I agree with a lot of the other stuff, and I think the pathway idea might have some mileage to it, it's hard for me to sign on to that, so I guess one question is, is there a mechanism by which we can approve portions of this separately? Could we say yes, 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 on these things, and say no to that for now?
Alright, I think it's time that we actually ask that, because I'm trying to look for a path that we're ever going to get to a recognizable form of motion here, so Trevor, have you got something you could suggest to, to us, you and Bonnie, or Donnie?
Sure, so, I think there's two ways you can go about this, one is conditioning the project, but if the, that, if the city's not going to accept those those conditions, you know, if we're talking about forcing them to, to carve out parts of the, the street, then better to just deny the project, they're not willing to accept that. You can also approve the project, but include recommendations to improve the project, if you want it to be communicated to the city council as well, so it's it's the commission's discretion which way it wants to go, if it wants to make recommendations about this, if it's something, if it's a condition that's needed in order for you to make one of the findings on here, then you could require it as a condition, but it doesn't need to be accepted by necessarily by the, the applicant, if it if it's going to be, it's significant, I'll change.
So let me ask you this, does, this has come before us, does this automatically go to the city council to, for some sort of final action, if it's not appealed, it doesn't, right?
Right, the coastal, there's no reason for the CDP to go before the council unless it's appealed, and the project, I don't believe, does the project design have to go to council? It's been presented to the council several times, I was counting in the resolution, recitals where the, the number of different public meetings and presentations on this have happened, and there've been nine of them.
Right, so the reason I ask the question is whether it makes any sense to make recommendations, rather than conditioning, if it's not going to go to the city council again, then the recommendations probably is a non-starter, right?
Right.
Okay, so let's talk about conditions that, that we might want to impose on the project, if we want to approve the project at all, John?
I think we're way before that, we need, we need to see if we can have variances, for example.
Yes, that's true, I'm good.
For example, the RFP to hire the designer. That, he's designed this with minor retaining walls, we've got over three hundred feet of variance retaining walls.
Okay.
Okay, and then he is supposed to respect the general plan, and have low-impact developments. Now, when I look at this, and I, I'm still a little confused on where the, where the sidewalk goes. But, to me, this is, this project belongs in Downey, okay?
This project what?
Belongs in Downey, just like the, the intersection where the fourteen lights belongs in Downey. It needs to be designed under Malibu standards, and I think Ryan brought up the fact that, and, and I, actually, a question real quick, are there sidewalks on both sides of the street?
No, it's only on the north side of the street.
Only on the north side, okay, so why do we?
No, excuse me, it's, it's from, it's only on a north side of the street from Webway to Winter Canyon.
What's Winter Canyon?
It's where the school is.
Where the school is, so, from Webway to Winter Canyon, not from PCH, not from Malibu Canyon.
Does it, doesn't it change?
And then it goes, and then it goes south from Malibu Canyon Road to Winter Canyon on the south side, so on the south side, there's a sidewalk all the way to Winter Canyon, and then it's, it switches to go on the north side, from the, from the school all the way to Webway.
Okay, now, why, why two hundred eighty-eightths feet of thirteen-and-a-half-foot-high retaining walls?
So, during the design process, to, to make this elevation correct, to make sure that the site distance are met through very strict standards, there is a horizontal and vertical curve that we have to make sure it turned out to make this project work, to make it safe, that retaining wall was needed to be in that location, and the height of the retaining wall is no more than ten feet high.
Thirteen and a half, according to your staff report.
That actually includes the, the safety railing?
I know, but that's how it's measured, that's what you're asking for on the variance.
The, the wall itself will be the ten.
But you're asking for a variance for thirteen and a half?
We wanted to disclose the whole height.
Okay, so, why isn't it two sixes?
Isn't what?
Two six-foot walls like the code requires.
It, according to our designers, that it, it wouldn't have worked with two sixes, and to make that work with, with the right-of-way section over there, with the, with the proposed sidewalk and everything, but the proposed sidewalk and the width we needed for all lanes, the bike lanes and everything else, it, we needed to have that, that retaining wall at that height.
Okay, so let's try and shape this a little bit, now, John, are you, are you, is it your feeling that, that you would not be inclined to support the granting of the variance for, for the retaining wall?
And there's another reason, I wanna just.
I wanna focus on one thing at a time, so let's.
Well, that's for the same variance, okay?
Yeah, let's talk about that variance.
We have a project next door, been approved, and has conditions, that's the cemetery. And if you look at those conditions, conditions eight, fifty-four, sixty-seven, eighty-one, ninety-three, all require different conditions than you have. Okay, for example, the bike lane has to be six feet, has to be six feet, has to be an eight-foot sidewalk. Okay, no trees, our, our shrubs can be over thirty-six inches. The landscape shall be twenty, ten to twenty feet from natural vegetation, retaining walls shall be veneered. And this is all, no development can be associated with a buffer, well, the buffer on the south side is an ESHA. So there's no development allowed by that landowner, and he is supposed to do all this stuff, okay? Supposed to put in the sidewalk and all this stuff, now, we're proposing to do it with our money, and, and change it from what he's required, so he has a CDP that says, you shall do this. And, there's no way you can do it, so I think that's a big problem.
So, we actually discussed this some today, and one of the provisions in the cemetery resolution allows for some of those improvements to be considered for fair share, future fair share contributions, so that one option would be for the cemetery project to pay a proportion of the project costs that the city is going to undertake for this, so that there would not then be the conflict between the two designs, and then they can still contribute as they're, they were conditioned to do in their original project.
But we're, by our design, we're violating his conditions.
Okay, so, so John, is it, am I understanding?
So there has to be something worked out.
Am I understanding you correctly, I'm trying to get to shape something that we can actually vote on here, is there a suggestion that the you would be unwilling to grant the variance unless it contained the provisions that were in the Memorial Park requirement, or is there something else that?
Well, something else is the requirement to follow the general plan, and what we're, we're doing is a cement wall, two hundred eighty-eight feet long, thirteen, ten to thirteen feet high.
I get that.
And we're doing another one that's, I think, nine feet higher.
Okay, so I, I, you, you stated earlier that it was, it was your, at least immediate thought that, that you would be inclined to deny the variance for the, for the retaining wall, let me see what.
Another reason, by the way, is that the city issued a RFP to design it a certain way, and then they didn't do it.
Okay, I get that, let's see if we can get something from the other commissioners to see where we are on this issue.
On the retaining wall?
On the wall, on the retaining wall.
And the variance.
I think it makes sense at the maison de ville notion there, if you have the pathway there, but I don't see it needing it in the other sections.
Okay?
I'm inclined to go with John in terms of the thirteen-foot wall, I mean, that's higher than what we thought it was gonna be, and same thing with the, the rural design, that was part of the RFP that the designer was supposed to read the general plan and all that stuff and understand that, and I don't see that being done inside the.
Commissioner Mark?
Just kind of a general question related to this, as we flatten that hill out, it increases visibility, but it would also increase speed, and would change drainage into the ESHA areas, is, how's that been accounted for in terms of the planning?
So, speed is not being changed, unfortunately, that's, that's set by state law there.
But to clarify, I, just, like, in our community, if, if we take out speed bumps and improve the road, the opinion is that we're gonna have people speeding, you know, it's fifteen miles an hour, but they'll be forty if they can. Is there anything which would, like, anything planned to help keep the speeds down because it's gonna be easier to go faster there?
Not in this, not in this project, not, not any speed humps, no traffic calming measures will be implemented. Part of the drainage, yes, there is drainage facilities, where we're gonna have curbs to, to protect the ESHA, and to make sure that the drainage flow is going properly away from it, doesn't drain into it from the roadway going in there.
Okay.
I, I just also want to address the retaining wall, this retaining wall is gonna be it, it's manufactured retaining wall that has concrete tiles that are gonna be put in. This concrete tile is, is gonna be colored concrete to match the earth tones, it also has, gonna be textured in a way to make sure it's kind of blending in, it makes it look like it's. look like it's more ruled than just plain just gray concrete, it's, it's definitely going to have an architectural feature that is just not going to be as a standard concrete retaining wall.
Let me ask something, Rob, in many past cases where we've had people who have applied for retaining walls that we didn't particularly like, we've kind of arrived at a point where you could have a wall that was, was, I can't remember what they're called now, but they have basically pockets in them and the pockets can be planted so that the, the surface doesn't present a smooth or even a textured concrete surface, it's basically planted and maintained with plants, is that something that you considered or is that something that's, that's even possible?
So, so one of the, one of the features we could, that could, that could be done there is ivy coming down from the wall and covering it up to make it landscaping on that.
Okay, so then I want to pick up on Commissioner Hill's suggestion as well, when we did the safe routes to schools years ago, the whole concrete versus DG came up and, there was a lot of resistance, but we finally ended up with DG, how, do you feel that DG would not be workable in this particular situation because it is sloped a little bit, but I think we overcame those situations out on the point, even though they weren't as hilly as this is?
So, a couple of things in there, definitely the slopes are kind of concerning out there because of DG does get eroded really quickly, there's high maintenance, very high maintenance issues with all of our DG paths, we've spent a lot of time fixing it up or making sure our DG paths in, in Point Dune for safe route to school, also in Legacy Park, there's a ton of maintenance to make those things safe and accessible, so, so, yeah, that was considered, we also brought this up at council and, and made council aware this, these are concrete sidewalks.
Okay, on that note, the council just recently passed a declaration of climate emergency and I'd point out that concrete is the third highest environmental contributor or the third highest contributor to global CO2 and behind energy use in transportation, and we don't need to be creating a bunch of concrete if we don't need to.
So, so one of the things to, I want to point out too, the bid has alternatives, so if bids come in favorably, yes, we are going to put in some type of paver system or something in there alternative favor than, rather than concrete to make that work a little better.
Okay, and one other remark on the, on the, on the height of the retaining wall, I have to say that, that, you know, as often expressed in the past, gives me an uncomfortable feeling when the city does things or provides things that we wouldn't allow private individuals to do.
I did want to clarify some of the questions I hadn't quite finished, yeah, first, you, you clarified that there is drainage, but my question was more, you know, to accommodate for the change in slope, I just wasn't sure, does that change maybe the velocity of the water hitting that ESHA area so it could impact that, so that was really the core question that I wanted to ask.
Oh, no, there's going to be no impact for that.
Okay, and then the other bit, just to clarify what Bonnie was saying, in looking at how, at that 10-foot height, so I'm trying to visualize, you've got a road going through and then what, we're going to have the sidewalk above it and then a safety rail, that's the three feet, is that, is that what gives us a 13?
Correct.
Okay, so then visually then you'd be looking at that kind of textured colored concrete.
I'm sorry, is the sidewalk at the same elevation as the pave, road paving? It's not on top of the.
No, the sidewalk's down below.
Yeah, it's, it's adjacent to the road, the retaining wall will be back and there's, the railing is simply included for, to protect anybody that's doing maintenance up there.
Got it, so then, okay, so then with the walkways below, but up at the higher level, we'd have a 10-foot kind of concrete look, which is textured to make it look better, then the nature of that railing, is it just that, like a simple couple of wires running across in terms of what the visual would look like, so it's, is it going to look like a 10-foot concrete wall or a 13-foot concrete wall?
If you could come up here.
In the meantime, just following Commissioner Hill.
Just a second, we have a question.
Hi, the three and a half foot railing at the top is just simple wires, so it's completely see-through and the 10 feet is only a small portion, a lot of the wall will be shorter, most of it averaging around eight-foot exposed face from the top of the sidewalk to the top of the wall.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Commissioner Hill.
Elaborating on Chair Jennings' comment, it might get us closer to not doing something that we don't allow the public to do if we could call it a 12-foot wall total by excavating a foot and a half behind it, could you, you know, at least, it's still not two staggered walls as we'd require, two sixes, but it's, it's not a 13 and a half foot wall either, it's.
Or just push it up slope a little bit.
Well, or is it, you know, just.
Let's, let's get, get staff an opportunity to see whether that.
We conducted a slope stability analysis on that wall, especially since the condos are back there, so a lot of that is done to reduce the impacts to that slope and to not go further back into that slope, so by doing staggered walls, you'd have to go further back into the.
We're not talking about staggered walls, now we're talking about excavating down a foot and a half.
A foot and a half.
In order to, to make the walls 12 feet high instead of 13 and a half feet high, does that make sense? I mean, does it, do you understand the language, not does it make sense to do it?
I think so, but we have to keep the slope behind the wall, so we can't make the slope behind the walls deeper, which would lower the wall if that's what you're saying.
John.
When you go to places like Westlake or upper-class places, they have walls that look like rocks, okay, they have walls that look like all kinds of things, are you talking about when you say?
Textured.
Textured wall, are you talking about looking like sandpaper or looking like rocks?
So, we have an option of, of making it look like rocks, we can make it look like wood texture, we have a different, we have all different types of textures we can do too, if it, if it, if it helps, we put that safety railing up there to kind of protect everybody from up above, think kind of coming down, if that is reduced or eliminated, that would solve that problem.
There isn't any, there isn't going to be anybody up above walking along a path up there, is there?
No.
Okay, all right, so let's.
Let me ask one other question on the texture, you have no ability to have plants in that 12-foot face, like they have these walls that are built out of like cement bricks.
That's what I was just saying, they said they could do it.
Well, they said, no, they said they're going to drop ivy over the top.
Something not invasive, wouldn't be ivy, but, so you could have a trailing plant come down, could you, could you also similarly have something that grew up from the bottom, like, like fig vine or something like?
Yeah, there could be, there could be some planting on there that kind of on the bottom that kind of comes up.
None of that's fire safe though, is it?
Well, but, I'm, I'm sorry, this is, since this is my question, that, we were talking about walls that have little openings in them, basically, little, little trays that can be planted with succulents and so forth, and we, we mandated that in the past, is that something that you're saying can't be done or is it can be done but you'd just rather have ivy trailing down over the top of it?
Well, we haven't looked at that and to see and if how that would, if, how it would be an option to do, I mean, that's, that's definitely something we can look into, it's just, it's, I.
But we're just, look, one of the, one of the objections to it is that it has a very urban look to it and we're trying to soften that in one way or another, now, I'd just like to try and take the temperature, maybe get a little straw pull, if we're going on the, on the issue of the variance for the wall, and if the, if you're, are you going to be just opposed to it under all conditions or are the things that would allow you to support it?
We're moving in the direction, sort of make it look more rural than urban, we get it to that point.
And, and, and have any specifics that, specifics, do you like the idea of having it planted or?
I like to have the idea of having it planted, I mean, I wish we'd had some of those options in there, things that we could at least see what the heck we're talking about, but yes, I mean, there, there are a variety of options, plants are one way to soften it up.
So, this is not a hill you're going to die on, no pun intended, Commissioner Hill.
People die here all the time, is there any way to, instead of having a vertical wall, to have it canted somewhat which would accommodate some of the planting concept and maybe not feel so urban, it would, you know, or is there just not enough space between the roadway and the maison or how does that work?
If you start tilting it this way, it's going to make the wall higher because you've got a slope in the back, and so to make that tilt, it's, you're giving a higher wall too and everything.
Well, make it longer but not necessarily higher, right?
And make it higher.
Because it has to go back and it has to go further up the hill.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just, I'm tossing it out as a thought.
Okay, so, but, but you're willing to consider it if we can make it less urban?
To, yeah, to me, it makes more sense there than to be putting a bunch of walls further up the road also, and I think, I think that's what John was saying about the cemetery.
John.
If it meets what I consider the general plan and something like, they've got to be textured like rock and it's got to be over 50% covered by plants, I could probably go for it, I have, I still have questions on the other side of the street.
Okay.
Yeah, the only kind of angle I would take on this is, we have what's considered unsafe here now and we're trying to go to, I'll say, very safe, is there something in between where we don't need to get that full 10 feet, you know, where it's, it's, like, is there, is there a, a section of the, you know, California code for making streets that determines how much line of sight we need, not a very technical way to put it, but.
Yeah.
It's more about getting the sidewalk.
Correct, yeah, so we're putting in, in this area, the minimum width required for a sidewalk, and then we actually are just barely meeting the horizontal site distance at this location, so we don't have any room to vary.
Got it, so you're having to cut into slope just to accommodate the width of the sidewalk, you're not trying, okay, so you're not, you're not reducing that grade at the top peak of the hill or both?
Yes, so it's doing a little bit of both, so it's cutting down the, it's cutting down the grade of the slope and to actually going into the slope a little more for the sidewalk over there on that side, so it's a combination of those things or making that, making that wall, that location and that height.
Okay, and then, and then to kind of go into where John was heading with this, code allows six, we're calling it 13 because we're including a metal rail which is really nothing, it, it's not a retaining wall of any type, it's just for safety.
Right.
Yeah, and then.
And it sounds like it's optional.
True, and then, and then the, the section that is over six feet, how long is that? I mean, we talked about 180-foot total wall.
280.
280, thank you, thank you, you know, what's kind of, just for, for rough numbers, so we have a sense of how much of a variance we're pushing for, it sounds like we have a valid reason, so, rough numbers.
Yeah, hold on, we'll get that.
All right, so I'd like to leave this, this one for the moment and go to the other variance that we have to rule on, which is the intrusion into the ESHA setback, right?
I believe Mr. Bo has an answer.
The ESHA buffer, and what's your feeling on that, we've heard that, that whatever is going to happen down by the Smith and Bell properties, the pavement's going to be where the pavement has, has been in the past, is this, is this, is this a variance you're inclined to grant or to deny?
Well, I want to, I mean, I want to understand, at one point I thought they were building fences along that Bell property, Civic Center Way, isn't there a fence, because there's a drop-off once you get.
The fencing goes along the Smith property where you, you probably have noticed that there's a big drop.
Big drop-off, right.
Yeah, so the fencing is, I think, just in that, does it go all the way to the corner of Webb?
No.
Just, just where there's a big grade change, so it's just a.
How far is that, do you think?
Down the street.
There's a pretty good strip there where it's a drop-off.
Is it going on the Smith property?
It has to, John.
Okay, and, and this fence is going to be, describe it for me, is this going to be chain link, razor wire?
No, it's, that's something we asked them about too, we, because of the proximity to the ESHA, it needed to be wildlife permeable, so it's going to be a wire, wildlife permeable design.
Is it going to be rural, you just put a bunch of wires up?
It's, there is an elevation in the project plans, it, it looks like a sort of a split rail fence and, so, but I don't think it's actual wood, right?
Can you show us which plans?
Yes, I'll find the, the page number for the plans.
Okay, so while you're looking for that, Steve?
Yes.
That was one thing you were talking about was.
I'm just wondering how much, I mean, in addition with the sidewalk and the, how much intrusion into the ESHA that we're going to have, because the fence is going to have to go into the ESHA side.
It's, it's along, it's along the sidewalk, so it's going to be right along the edge of the paving, it's not into the ESHA, so it's right adjacent to it but not, it's not going to encroach into the ESHA.
How about the other ESHA on the south side?
This is, we're talking about the, oh, the, by the treatment plant?
Well, they're up to, up to Malibu Road.
There's a fence, is there a fence in that location? There's not one on the south side.
I mean, Malibu Canyon, there's no improvements along there?
No fence on the south side.
What improvements are there? Okay, and is that sidewalk, there's a retaining wall too, is there, what's the necessity of the retaining wall?
On the treatment plant side, there's a retaining wall, but the sidewalk doesn't begin until the crosswalk at Winter Canyon.
Wait, there's no sidewalk from Malibu Canyon down to Winter Canyon at all?
There's a, there's a sidewalk on the south side, there's a photograph up on the screen that shows the proposed sidewalk on the south side from Malibu Canyon to Winter Canyon and then across the street and the sidewalk continues on the north side from Winter Canyon to Webway.
Right, and as I look at it, you're looking right at ESHA, so how are you going to put the sidewalk in, that affecting ESHA?
That wasn't, I don't believe that was determined to be ESHA.
Declare ESHA in the, in the, I can read it to you.
All right, so the question, this doesn't have anything to do with the variance the staff has put forward to us, but the question is, isn't that ESHA, aren't you, if you put the sidewalk on the south side, aren't you going to be intruding into ESHA itself?
My understanding is no, there's not ESHA designated in that location.
It's, it was.
Right, I mean, because part of the review included looking at the memorial park.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I did find the elevation of the fencing, it's on sheet 45, the, of the construction details.
We don't have that though, do we? Which?
It's in the agenda report packet, it's, there's no page number for the, for the packet, but it's on sheet 45 of 67 or Plan Set.
How would we find it?
It's in the lower right corner, is there a reference, like SD1 or something?
Yeah, there is, it says sheet blank of blank, it's really small, but, yeah.
What is it?
So, it's, it's what sheet, is it 45?
Yeah.
Sheet 45.
Oh, I see it, so what are the poles made out of? Are those, are those cement or are those steel or?
They had originally been proposed of wood, but we found out from Rob and others at the city that wood is not allowed anymore since it's fire, so we're looking into alternatives.
This is, this is the, right here is the, this is the fence that's going to go on the Smith property.
Is that the same style of fence that'll be on top of the retaining wall? No.
Now, I'm looking at this and the poles are much, much higher than the fence, is there a reason for that? Am I looking at the right thing?
Talking about the vertical members of the fence?
Oh, that's, oh, I'm looking at it upside down.
This is what goes into the ground.
So, those are wires in between, that's not animal permeable?
Could you get rid of the wires, is it, is it necessary to have the wires there? It would be better, yeah, it would be better to have those eliminated.
Yeah. Is that fence wood?
Well, they said they can't be wood.
It's, it's an alternative and it's not, yeah, we didn't want to have wood based on fire issues over here, so it's going to be an alternative kind of product.
Is it like plasticky though?
Maybe, it's, we're, yeah, we're looking into different options for, for that, but it's not, it's not going to be wood.
It's going to be industrial, that's the question.
It's, it's going to be textured, it could be textured concrete, it could be textured plastic.
Those concrete, they use them in estate parks a lot, the concrete.
Yeah, and a fall park.
So, we're still talking about the construction within the 100-foot ESHA buffer, which is, my understanding has to do with the Smith and Bell properties, have you, have, is there opposition to, to moving forward on those variances, if you've still got questions about them?
I have a question on this one, one that's up. I have a question on this one, one that's up there now. It's identified in, I read the staff report, I read the conditions. It's identified as a wildlife corridor and a sensitive, uh, environmental area and, and we restricted them from doing anything within twenty feet of it. Anything, including planting.
I don't think that's correct.
Well, uh, it's, it's conditioned, one of these conditions, let me find it.
You're now talking about the area south of, 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 um, Webb Way, right? I know, where am I?
Along the cemetery.
Of Malibu Canyon, sorry.
Condition eight talks about no development or repair in ESHA, okay? And associated buffers.
Sorry, are you talking about the, um, resolution approving the cemetery project?
Yes.
Okay, condition eight is.
Now that, but that, that particular condition talks about existing landslides.
Condition eight, but I think I'm looking in, you must be reading something different. Condition eight says, "Any questions of intent or interpretation of any condition of approval shall be resolved by the planning director." Are you looking at, what are you looking at?
Well, I have to have the thing in front of me, I forgot to bring it.
He's looking at the plans for the, oh, you're looking at, okay.
Condition sixty-seven.
Tell, tell her a code keyword and she can look it up.
Landscape shall be twenty, ten to twenty feet from vegetation and wildlife corridor. And that whole area is a wildlife corridor.
No, the, the, the EIR for, the initial study for the, the Memorial Park project determined that the vegetation on the site, while some of it was native, was not, um, a large enough area to be considered an ESHA.
But it was considered a wildlife corridor.
It wasn't, it was not considered a wildlife corridor.
Yes, it was, condition sixty-seven.
All right, look, wait a minute. Try to put, impose some structure on this, and the structure I want to impose is the variance, the requested variance for the intrusion into the ESHA setback requirement. And that, as I understand it, applies only to the Smith and Bell properties. That's, that's the issue you're talking about when you're talking about intrusion into that setback. All right. Let's talk about that.
How far is that intrusion, so there's, we're saying there's no intrusion, or is?
There's no intrusion.
No intrusion, he said, what they're saying is there's no intrusion into the ESHA, but there is intrusion into the required ESHA setback, the hundred-foot ESHA setback, all right?
And, and the fence we're talking about is how big now? I'm just trying to make sure I understand what, yeah, what size?
Fair enough.
It's forty-two inches. The split rail design that we were just looking at in the plans.
That's what it's going to be, split rail?
Uh, well, the, the design is, the material is to be determined, but, um.
It will resemble a split rail fence.
It'll be, it'll be wildlife permeable.
Wildlife permeable, it's four and a half feet.
Yeah? Steve?
Three and, well, this is four and a half feet, so not forty two.
Could we condition that it not be something that burns in a toxic way like plastic?
Something that burns in what?
A toxic way, like that it could, concrete or some other material that, that you can be happy with? Landscape timber kind of material?
Or metal?
Because that's not legal.
Oh, synthetic?
No synthetic, I don't know. Is there some, some?
All right, let's, let's, I, I guess where you're going there, John?
On that fence?
On, on, no, on this variance, the intrusion into the hundred-foot ESHA setback.
Are you talking Smith on it?
Smith and Bell, Smith and Bell.
And I think they need a variance for, it's consistent with the cemetery property.
Yeah, but we're not talking about that. Right now, we're just talking about the intrusion into the setback in the Smith and Bell properties.
Yeah, except I think there's an error in the staff report, because it's passed, it's passed, Pat said, right now before the, the coastal commission is the Bell property.
Right.
As an ESHA.
Right. I, I get that, but it would, I get that. Mr. Marks?
Uh, just to clarify, so what we're talking about then is, we're not going to move any closer to, we're not going to do any construction or changes to, um, you know, we're going to do paving, that's it, on existing roadway, no closer into existing ESHA, but we do work in, within the setback of the hundred foot from ESHA. We just can't avoid that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Because the whole road is in the setback.
Yeah. And effectively.
Those are the kind of circumstances where we would, where the commission would typically grant a variance where the, the encroachment or cannot be avoided, because there's no, there's nowhere else to do the work because the entire site or some large portion of it is in the ESHA or the ESHA setback.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, just in terms of physically how this lays out, so.
All right, let me, let me turn to John's issue about the section of the roadway along the memorial park, which John asserts is ESHA. Have you got an, an answer to that?
It's, it was determined.
We are not intruding into ESHA or?
That's correct, it's not ESHA.
It's not ESHA?
It's not ESHA.
I'd be happy with something that says they follow the conditions on the property.
Follow the conditions that are already on, that have already been imposed. All right.
You, you suggested that the conditions on there required a sidewalk of a sort of excessive width.
They do, I don't know what you're going to do about that.
Six feet.
Yeah, you don't need a six-foot sidewalk, so you don't want to fall and.
They're required to do it, somebody's got to work that out legally.
Well, the, the other thing to consider is that at this, at this point in time, we don't know whether the memorial park project is going to move forward or not. The design of this project does not preclude the memorial park from meeting these conditions and the ones that are applied to it CDP in the future. They could certainly come to the commission with, uh, a proposed amendment to change those conditions if they didn't want to, for example, you know, put in a wider sidewalk and Public Works is already going to put in as part of this project. Or they could work out some kind of the fair share contribution issue. But at this point, um, the way this project is designed does not preclude the, the memorial park from meeting their required conditions at some point in the future, should that project ever move forward. It was approved three years ago and I haven't, I don't think the department's heard anything from them. I don't know what the status of it is.
Well, my question there would be, if they came in, said, "Here we go, we're going to start planting people and we're doing this", would they get a CDP? Would they be vested? Would they, would, would it qualify or would they have to rip out what we did and put in the other stuff?
Well, they, that would have to be determined, um, whether, um, they would approach the, or, you know, submit for a CDP amendment or whether there's some alternative that wouldn't necessitate a CDP amendment or ripping out the, the project that's about the.
Okay, so, so let's, look, we've got two more projects or, or applications we've got to consider tonight. Let's try to get this shaped up log. So what I'm looking for now is the conditions that you might want to impose on this project if you're, if, in order to support it, and I'm going to go down to Steve first.
Are, are, have, have we, the things we've agreed to, we agreed to DG pathways?
DG, uh, Rob is pushing back on DG because of the high maintenance costs and, uh, the sloped area of it, but.
Okay, and we, we have, can, we have decided to condition the wall to have foliage on it, so, is that?
That's right, that's, that's one of the things that we're, we're talking about.
The other condition I'd like to put in is that if they replace the stop, the street light, it gets replaced with dark sky lighting components.
Okay.
Okay? And the other condition I'd like to put in is that.
Hold on just a second. You, you're okay with that? You're okay with that, John? Yep, okay.
Last one is, I'd like to have, if part of this project, some study done on the amount of traffic, additional traffic that's going up Malibu Canyon, because this thing is going to kill us up there.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not sure that we can actually impose a condition like that. It doesn't really, not within our purview, but what we can do is we can recommend to the city council that the city council, uh, assign the funds that would be necessary in order to, to study the additional traffic that would be going up to Malibu Canyon, is that?
I'd like to find something stronger than that if we can, because.
Okay, okay. All right.
Question?
Hold on just a second.
What were the conditions for the wall?
The conditions for the wall were.
I'm going to propose that it's fifty percent coverage and it's a rock wall texture.
Okay, and, and that's consistent with what you're saying, right? Okay, you got that?
Yep.
All right. Um, other, other conditions that you're interested in imposing?
My big one is the traffic, you know, impact the traffic in Malibu Canyon.
Yeah, can, do we have a number for how many square feet of the triangle property would be, uh, dedicated to the easement? And, and maybe, is there a way we could express that as, as a percentage of the triangle property?
Are you talking, are you talking about as currently proposed? Or, or if the bike lane was extent, was expanded?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You mean, is, is the project's proposed right now? What they're shaving off the corner there?
Yeah, how, how much they'd be shaving, how much they'd be altering that actually, as, as a square footage or, or quarter of an acre, however you can express it, um.
Remember, the city can always do variances on what's built there.
I'm just trying to get a sense, because, you know, this, I'm, I'm, my biggest concern about this is the public process thing on the land, and I, I don't want to see us aggregating that by, by chipping away at the publics.
This is a, this is a good picture of it right here. It's about ten foot wide and I'm trying to gauge maybe about a hundred and fifty foot long? It's kind of, you can see that section, there's a, um, line and two short little lines and a line and.
Lily can, um, use the mouse.
So we're talking about approximately ballpark fifteen hundred square feet off of one point seven acres. That's, that's roughly, what, like seventy thousand? So, a few percent, right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
I'm going to throw something in the mix.
Just a second, I'm, I'm, where are you going with that?
Yeah, well, I, I'm just, I think if it was not more than a few percent, I mean, like, one concern was the fire department, if that was going to be the use, they wanted two acres and, you know, it was like, well, maybe one point seven is just enough. Maybe this would be less. That's not the ideal use there, I think maybe the visitor center or some other thing, but.
So, so we're talking now about conditions that we're going to impose on this? What kind of a condition are you, are you talking about here?
Yeah, uh, well, or we're talking about, I'm just trying to gauge how much we're affecting that and what kind of things we're precluding and, you know, I, ideally, it would be easy for me to say yes to a lot of what's here, but that part is, seems like a bit of a hang up and maybe I'm seeing that a few percentage points doesn't make a substantial difference.
And, and, and what I'm trying to get at is that at some point, we have to take a vote and if you're going to say, "I'm going to vote no" because I, I'm not willing to allow any portion of the triangle process to go forward, that's fine, that's your vote.
Yeah.
If there's a condition that you want to impose that would restrict it to, so you can have no more than a hundred and twenty square feet of it or no more than two percent or whatever it is.
I don't know how we could do that. Is there a way that we could do that?
It's also a, a council decision, it's their own property, what they want to do with it. I mean, this has been to multiple commissions, and if the concern is just, you know, we don't think it's the best use of public funds, that's a decision for the council. If there's a reason that we would need to.
No, 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 the, the concern was that the council has said, "We're going to have a robust process to let the public determine."
Yeah, but the question is whether we have a finding you can't make here for the commission. That's what we're looking at, is the, is the variances in the CDP. So if you would need to adjust what the project looks like to make those findings?
Yeah.
That'd be appropriate, but we can't just assume the, the city council's mantle and say, "We think the, the property should be used differently just because the city's the applicant here."
Okay, okay, so let's, I hope you're taking notes here, Trevor.
I'll, I'll live with it, I'll live with it.
Okay, John, you had some, another condition that you wanted to impose?
It affects that corner.
What?
It affects that corner. This, this whole project is for safety. And if you look at the diagram of how the roads are set up, on the busiest corner in Malibu, it's not safe. You can't have a twelve-foot road with a six-foot space for a bike. The car doesn't fit and it's a right turn lane. So I, I want a condition that says.
He's, he's already said it's different.
You should walk through the lane dimensions because that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there isn't a six-foot lane there for a bike. It's, it's too narrow and that's one of the compromises that we've talked about to switching the, um, path to the, to the north side of the street that brought this up to council. One of the trade-offs was that it, it eliminates the dedicated bike lane on this section for a period of time and then once we have a wider section, um, the bike, the bike lane will come back.
But the question is, does a bike trans, make a turn on that intersection in a lane without a bike lane? And shares that only turn lane, there's only one turn lane going that direction, with cars?
So, so what happens is that there is a small buffer area for bikes with that right turn lane? And so bikes will be able to go in between the right turn lane and the number one lane?
But they're still, my question is, why can't you add three feet off of, uh, the triangle parcel to allow a real live lane on a, on busiest corner in Malibu?
Then that's taken up more lane or, or more, more property on the, on island property to do it?
On which property?
So, the city's vacant property to the south?
Right.
Would be, would be taking up more property over there?
I, I understand that. We're spending five point two million dollars to improve the safety of Civic Center Way. We're taking the most dangerous corner on Civic Center Way and we won't give up three feet. That's, that's a big deal to me, because we're here to protect people.
Okay, John, let's, that, that's one of your conditions, that the condition is that the bike lane must be made, no less than.
I want, all I want is legal lanes, bike lanes and whatever they are, they're legal.
You want to add a three-foot bike lane?
Right.
For, starting at the corner, for what length?
So, if you look on the chart on page four of twenty-six, there's one lane that shows twelve feet with a car and a bike. It's on the right-hand side, I don't know which way that's aimed. Whether that's a right or left turn, I have no idea, but.
This one.
Each one of these lanes is legal except that one.
Except the five-foot bike lane?
No, this one.
Except.
You're saying the, the image that says twelve feet with a car and a bike in it, right?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's the one you're looking at. So is there, I mean, Commissioner Hill didn't want to give any more of the island property. Is there consensus here that you would want to add three feet for a bike lane?
And just to clarify, didn't he, didn't Rob say that that is, there are several different grades of bike safe lanes and that, that conforms to one of the, the less space requiring ones?
Okay, well, let's see, we have to, at, at some point, we need to vote and one of the things we need to talk about is, is whether there's support for what you're talking about. Is there support for, uh, John's?
Can you hear what I'm talking about here?
I do see, I do see exactly what you're saying and I think that's standard and typical.
No, it isn't. The law says.
No, no, let's, let's not debate it any further, we understand, we get it.
The bike, the bike lane coming down, we're, how, how big is the bike lane going all the way back? Five feet?
Go, go, going back to.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, if I'm, if I'm riding my bicycle, I got a bike lane on the side of the, right? This is the one he's talking about. Yeah, but there's a bike lane going up the hill.
Yeah, you're saying the bike lane coming down the hill is five feet, right?
And, and so bike lane going up the hill, where does that bike lane going up the hill enter into a real bike lane?
Is there a designated?
Just, you know, where the, where the road starts curving more towards the, the Vail properties? That's where, um, it, it's hard to show on the map, but it, it's just right, it looks like it's just right by the, right by the, um, Smith property?
Go back to that one.
Right by the Smith property is what it transitioned into a, to a five-foot bike lane.
So it's just the portion from Webb Way to the portion of the Smith property where there's not a separate designated bike lane on the northern side of the road? Is that correct? And then after that, it becomes a full five-foot bike lane?
Correct.
Okay.
So majority of the path, the majority of it is there, it's just that section.
With that, I would, I'm, I'm inclined to stick closer to John and sort of say, "You got to have a bike lane there" because he's, I mean, there's tons of bike riders going up that road every Saturday and Sunday. It's packed. And, you know, to have people come to.
Okay, so, and the, and the, and the place that the, that the space for the bike lane has to come from is, is the?
They would, they would need an additional variance if they're going to push it into the, um, the Bell property.
We can't.
It would have to go, that's why it would have to go south, otherwise it would, uh.
The reason I'm saying the triangle property is we don't have to buy the Bell property. We don't have to go through condemnation, we don't have to do everything else. All we got to do is instead of taking a foot, we take four feet. Now, I don't care about a giant bike lane, but I want somebody able to turn on that corner without getting killed. That's the whole purpose of the whole thing.
Would a three-foot lane be, be sufficient in that area?
Fine with me, it's just so the guy didn't get killed.
No.
So, so what you have to consider here too is, if you start shifting and you start making additional bike lanes, that shifts all the traffic lanes and what you have to consider is there's already a dimension where that, where that travel lane on Civic Center, before you get to Webb Way, you come to that, to that position and so to go across Webb Way, there's, there can only be a certain amount of offset. So you have a lane going this way and a lane going this way, the offset can only be so much. And, and when you put the bike lane in there, you're adding three more feet, the offset goes too much and then we're, we're compounding a lot of issues. We'd have to really do a huge change on Civic Center Way, that, that whole alignment to, um, the travel lane to make sure that that would fit.
I don't believe there's a bike lane on Civic Center Way. I don't believe there's a bike lane on Civic Center Way.
It's, it's the travel lane that I'm talking about.
You're not switching anything, you're making a wire.
Okay, so we understand your position and, and, and you're inclined to support John's position?
I think you need, you need some space dedicated to a bike in that corner.
Craig?
I, I value the triangle space higher. I think, I think this is standard to do what Rob's saying.
I'm supporting the staff recommendation on this, what about you?
Um, I still don't think, the pictures don't match. So this, this picture on page four of 26, it's 58 feet and that's in the staff report. And in the picture we keep showing up here is 53 and a half. So I just want to make sure it's really clear exactly what we're recommending. So the width on, whatever that slide was, as it comes back up, the, the numbers don't line up. So I just wanna.
Which, which slide? Is the slide of Webway and Civic?
Yeah, it was, it was.
Are you on page four of 26?
No, this, no, keep on that one.
Backup one, backup to there.
So, so if you go that one, we got 58 feet, the other's 53 and a half.
So go back to the, the staff report where you, where we had the fence?
Yeah.
You have it here?
Yeah.
So, and look back one page or it's, it's page 47 of 67 of the plans. And you'll see it, it's the signing and striping plans for Webway and Civic Center. It shows the striping pattern that you have in there, you have the 12-foot lanes. You, you show a bike safety refuge area. And so you have, you have one, two, three, four.
53.
Yeah, so, so you have that, so that's, that's how that configuration happens there.
So then this, the, the other image you had up there was incorrect, because that only.
No, this is, this is in the majority of the cases. So as you get past the Smith property to where you have the, the dedicated five-foot bike lane, this is the, this is the width and this is, that's what you'll see in the majority of the cases.
Is it, it's 53 or 58?
It is, is what, 53?
The total, the total width.
So like I mentioned, it, over on Civic Center Way towards Webway, it's 53. When you, when you get closer to the veil properties, it's, it's 58.
Yeah.
So then we don't, so in the illustration, you show a bike lane between the right turn lane going eastbound in this image roughly?
So you see the difference between the two is the 58 feet or is the five-foot bike lane that had to be shared from Superior Ranch Road to, to approximately where the Smith property is.
This image is incorrect.
This, this image is, is correct for.
A different section.
A different section, not for this section here.
It's not correct for the corner.
Correct.
Correct.
How, how wide is the corner?
It's 53.
53, so it's even narrower than this. The guy's dead.
Well, he's gotta go over to the right of the cars.
He's dead.
Well, he's gonna have cars turning into him, which we talked about earlier. So I, I side towards giving that three, you know, taking that three feet from the triangle to give that cyclist safety. Or in this case, I'd give it five, you know, because I personally, coming through that, to John's point, this is a busy intersection and I've been hit by cars trying to make a, you know, make that cut and the car just clipped my rear tire. So I don't like having to do that between cars.
So two things, two things we have in here. If you go the center lane of the road on Civic Center based on the alignment of the existing Civic Center Way on the eastern side, has to be pretty much close together. You can't, you can offset it a little bit, but when you start offsetting it too much, then you start having problems with traffic and collisions and that's not the, the safe way of doing it. The other way i- is to push the, the edge of pavement north into the area outside of our paving area and into possibly where the Esche would be. So you have those two options that you gotta consider when you're looking at this. And that's, we figure that, and, and we brought this up to council too, is we have to make sure this, this fits. And the only way this could fit was to eliminate part of that pathway from that section on.
Let me ask you a question. If it's, the corner is 53, what gets taken out of this diagram?
The bike lane.
Five lanes have to go, five feet have to go.
Bike lane.
Is the, is the sidewalk going or are the narrow lanes, are the lanes getting narrower?
So what I mentioned before, this section does not have a dedicated bike lane, so that five-foot goes away. And so the, the cyclists will have to share a lane with, with the, with the, with the vehicles up until, like I said, approximately to the Smith property.
Commissioner Marks? Just, I don't know if you, if you sat in that, what is it, left-hand turn lane coming down Civic Center Way trying to turn into where City Hall is?
Yes.
And the cars that are coming down, coming down Webway make a big turn there. I mean, so it, when you're sitting there, it's scary when they're coming around you. And if you're riding a bike, you're gonna hit somebody.
Right.
I mean, you're gonna pick somebody off of there.
So I, 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 you know, I respect where Commissioner Hill is, but I'd prefer to give that little extra safety caution by going a little further into the triangle.
All right, look, it's nine o'clock, it's past nine o'clock, we've got two more items to do. Let's try to get a motion together here. If you want, I will make it, Trevor, I hope you've been taking good notes on what we've been talking about. So my motion is a staff recommendation with the following conditions.
Do you want me to give, we have consensus on the wall, the wall's 50% coverage with, with vegetation? And what was the length of the wall, over six feet? It's about 120? Thank you. Also that it has a rock wall texture.
That's right, okay.
For the street light, that it would have dark sky components compatible with, I believe there was, Commissioner Euring provided directions so that it would, it would comply with. Are there issues with compliance with the, with what has been circulated over here? Okay. Is dark sky compliant?
Put that in the rec, put that in the rec, they can, they want to change it. Jim Bagna gave me that, that's what they're, he's doing in the other cities.
Okay, that would comply, that would comply with, with, with the, with that here or similar?
Yeah.
David, just a technical question. On dark sky compliant, since it's not in the dark sky ordinance, is that a loophole?
No, it's, this is a special condition.
Commissioner Euring is saying that in this location, it's important that we have a dark sky compliant. Like to be compatible with, with the environment and with the rural residential character of the city, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and one of the conditions was?
And then also to recommend that the city council study and mitigate traffic impacts on Malibu Canyon Road.
From the increased traffic from this road?
The results from, the results from this project.
We talked about reducing the, removing the wall, or the fencing at the top of the wall to lower the height from 13 and a half down to 10.
Is there consensus on that?
Is that consensus, is there consensus on that?
No, 10's the exact number, but yes, remove the wall. Remove, remove the protective fencing.
And then there was some fencing stuff, where we're gonna eliminate some wires on some fencing.
Yes, for the fencing along the north side of the road. We wanted to make it wildlife permeable.
Right.
And that was eliminating the wires?
Wait a second.
Okay, just wildlife permeable and not wood or plastic, was that?
Well, not, not. Not plastic, yeah.
Sintaphonic material, whatever you want to call it.
Stuff that when it burns, won't poison us all.
Yeah. I have one condition to add.
All right, Commissioner Hill?
Uh, the staff report talks about how on the memorial there, property, there are black walnut and toyon that weren't big enough to deserve protection, but that report was eight years ago, so.
There's already a condition in the resolution requiring an updated inspection of those trees.
Okay, great.
What, any more?
Yes, the path.
The process of making sure that we get these rural characteristics built into this project, how do we make sure we do that?
I would communicate that.
What we do is we say that that's what we want and we do it.
I mean, I understand, my problem is this, they've, they've gone through this, how many reviews of this they've been through? And none of that's been incorporated anyplace. You'd like to, so my sense is they don't really have a flavor or feel for what we think we want to have done. I'm just wondering, how do we make sure that those things get in there?
I think, I think that you should, you speak with your individual council members and state that you believe that should be a priority as, in terms of the, you know, the RFP process and the design of these projects.
But, I mean, the RFP says.
I think that's, that's really the answer to a lot of the stuff, is talk to your council member and make sure that they do. Otherwise, you know, short of appointing you as monitor.
No, no, but here's the process. I mean, the RFP that they send out says that they're supposed to do that.
It just needs, it just needs more emphasis, that's, that's what I'm suggesting. It was mentioned in the RFP, but it's, you know, clearly, it's a, community character is a big issue. And so I think it would help to.
To reinforce what the judicial statement says?
Yeah.
Okay, so one more, John?
No, I'm a little confused. Is this going to the council?
No.
Okay, then why are we talking about the council?
In future.
Because we are.
Oh, okay, yes, did we deal with the, is part of the motion that, that we need a bike lane on the corners?
Yeah, I think it is.
No, the.
I don't think you read that.
That's one, it's Commissioner Jennings' motion. So it was what, two to three, not for a bike lane? John and I, yes?
I'm, I'm for a bike lane.
Oh, he was, he was.
Okay, we got three to two.
Are you, you are for the bike lane, taking the land from the triangle?
Correct, correct.
And you are too?
And so is Steve.
I'm in.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, three to two then.
Okay, then let's, let's put that condition in. I think Rob's saying that it wouldn't be.
So putting in a bike lane in, in that intersection forces two things. You're, you're gonna have to change, you're gonna have to encroach into probably, maybe the neighboring property on the north side, the Bell property and Smith property. You're encroaching probably into the Esche over there if you do that. And, and so it's not just adding, adding, you know, a bike lane and pushing it over to the south. You have the travel lanes, existing travel lanes that you have to consider and, and the alignments on Civic Center Way to make sure those alignments are matched up. When you start pushing things and moving things around, they don't match up.
If you're pushing a, a right turn lane, it doesn't continue to the, to the southwest or southeast side of the intersection, correct? It would just be the cyclist that would have to adjust.
So, so the, the issue was the bike lane on the north side of Civic, of Civic Center Way?
No, 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 this would be on the south side, so it's not interacting.
On the south side, there isn't any, there, there isn't a bike lane on the south side of the street.
That's why we're taking a triangle property and putting it there.
So, so there isn't any bike lane on, on the south side of the street for the whole tire strip?
You're talking about the north side, no, he's talking about the north side.
So north side is the only side where the bike lane is located.
Really? How big's the sidewalk at the corner of Webway and Civic Center Way? Why is that sidewalk?
Oh, excuse me. So there is a bike lane on the, on the south side and it goes all the way up to where the, that turn pocket to go on PCH from Civic Center, it goes there. And then from there, we struggle with the width going all the way going down to Webway.
So I'm only concerned about the intersections.
Could you, can you take a little bit of sidewalk?
So, so, so John, are, are you talking about a bike lane on the south side of the, of the street?
Yeah, you already have one.
We're talking about, we're talking about a bike lane on the south side of the street.
So not on the north side of the street, but on the south side, a dedicated bike lane on the south side of the street?
Correct, so as you're coming downhill from PCH, you hit the intersection of Civic Center Way and Webway. You would have a, a bike lane to go between the lanes instead of being forced to have to merge through cars turning right?
A dedicated bike lane all the way down south Civic Center Way, all the way to Webway, a dedicated bike lane?
Yes.
That's the. So, so let me ask you, how far you want this bike lane? Because we have some right-of-way issues in some locations where we have Caltrans on the south side. We're pushing the boundaries of what we can do on the south side of there. But once we get to, once we get to the intersection, we could conceivably push and make, make more of a bike lane over there. Probably where the, you know, where the curve, where we start the vacant property the city has, going all the way to the intersection.
Yeah, I'm, I'm most concerned about the corner.
Okay.
You go back as far as you can, but they can fend for themselves, we're on the straightaway. But on the corner, they're splattered.
So the, the, the condition that I'm, is I'm understanding is that the, there must be the bike lane on the south side near the intersection, but not necessarily the entire south length of the roadway.
Yeah, that, that I could.
So, okay, so.
We could look into doing that.
The condition would be to add a dedicated bike lane on the south side of Civic Center Drive, starting at the intersection with Webway and then going, what street is it?
West.
Westward as far as feasible? And it would, it would line up with the illustration on page four.
The, the ill-fated roundabout would have solved this alignment issue.
Don't start.
Can you say that again, because, see, as long as, are you covering the corner? That's a mandatory.
I can repeat it.
And as far as, as feasible to the, to the west of that.
Okay, sound it backwards.
Okay, so those are the conditions we've got, John?
I want to deal with the pathway.
With what?
The, the sidewalk, okay? Uh, we talked about DGs, we got it, we got pushed back on DG, even though on Point Dune, they added this rubberized DG that seemed to work.
I think we might have a vote for it.
Vocalization. But if DG doesn't work, I don't want a big cement line. I mean, you talked about permeable pavers or something like that.
Make your suggestion.
Okay, the walkways have to be permeable.
Support?
I, I, do we not have support for DG even though it makes life a little harder for public? We might have it.
Just check, I mean, this rubberized DG, does that work? That they put up in Point Dune?
No, that, that doesn't, that doesn't work in last or it doesn't. It, it makes it, it's, we still have huge maintenance problems with all those DG pathways. So one of the things that, that we have in our bid is not just conventional concrete and it's gonna be colored concrete, but we have also porous concrete that we have. And so if bids are favorable, then we can go with porous concrete, which is a, a material that's, looks like concrete, but you have a lot of openings in it. And so if you pour it, pour water over it or the water seeps in. We, yeah, we have a lot of it over by Tranca's Park where we put it in and it looks, performs really well.
But it would still look like a city sidewalk, right?
That, it's, it's, it seems more gravelly, because you see, you have a lot of pores opening. You see, it's, it's more gravelly than anything.
I would, I would like, since it's so long, I would like. Okay, I'd like to have something that looks more like what we require people to build houses to use. Driveways, cement impermeable, permeable.
So what's, this is what Rob is saying, this stuff is permeable.
It looks like cement. Yes.
It's like grasscrete, what?
Yes, it's, it's, you have tons of pores that are inside this concrete where it, it's, it goes through, the water goes through and it's.
Let me ask you a question.
And it's totally permeable.
What's the biggest hole in?
Probably, we'd say quarter.
Eighth of an inch?
Yeah, maybe a quarter of an inch.
That's, that's a cement sidewalk as far as I can.
Okay, so look, here's our choices, really, we could, if it's a money deal, we can do whatever we want and the city council will come back and say, no, 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 we're not gonna pay for that. So let's, let's drive, let's say what it is we want.
Okay, I would like permeable pavers. Is that the right term?
Permeable material, I think to be more general.
He just said that's permeable and you just said, no, that looks like a sidewalk, so you need to propose something different.
He said pavers, not a poured concrete sidewalk. Now, if you want to go for DG, I'll vote with you, but I don't think it's, it's gonna pass. You know what I'm talking about, interlocking pavers, like cities that have money use.
The kinds that have, grass will grow up in between them?
That's, that's grasscrete, that's, that takes, that takes maintenance, but.
So.
Square pavers that everybody in Malibu that has a new house has.
So currently, right now, with the budget that we have, we feel confident that we can, we can do this with the concrete. We're hopefully, we get favorable, favorable bids and that we'll be able to do the porous concrete, which is significantly more aesthetic and, and like I said, it looks like more, like a gravelly pathway than, than it is concrete.
I just want to point out.
So, but, pavers, pavers.
Is, 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 is there any submit, you've heard what, what Rob is describing? Is that something which you're willing to go with, Steve?
Can I add one thing?
Just a second.
I'm more inclined to do either DG or pavers.
All right, so we're going back to DG, we got one DG, two GDs, three DGs?
Yeah.
Okay, four?
I'm good with DG.
Okay, it's all on DG, sorry.
And the lighting?
City council.
And we understand, right, that colored concrete will be the same color.
And we understand, right, that colored concrete will be the same color as DG. I mean, could you add like a wood boundary, border to it or something so that it kind of looks more like the DG would? I mean, it's, it's gonna look the same.
Color of concrete will be the same color as DG.
The idea is for it to feel like a pathway, not a sidewalk.
It's just, it's a maintenance nightmare, and it's gonna blow the budget.
No, I want to remind everybody that a large portion of the sidewalk is on Richard Weintraub's nickel, okay?
Not on maintenance, but in any event, that's where we are. That's the motion, all right? Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
Can I confirm what we're saying? We're saying the entire, are we saying all pathways are DG?
Yep.
Why not?
Did we, did we address the low pedestrian foot lighting, or is that already in it?
You don't have lighting.
I don't think there is any lighting.
We don't need that?
There's no pedestrian foot lighting in this project, is there? No.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can summarize the proposed, the motion would be then to approve the project with the following added conditions. One is that the wall includes 50% covered with vegetation, a rockwell texture, and that we, another condition is that we, oh, and that we remove the protective fencing from the wall. Then that the street light has dark sky components compatible with the, with, who's the, with the?
Jim Benya.
Benya, suggestions or comparable. Fencing on the north side is to be wildlife permeable and not made out of wood or plastic.
I want to add one thing there.
Also to recommend that the city council study and mitigate traffic impacts on Malibu Canyon Road that result from the project, that dedicate a bike lane at the intersection of Webway and Civic Center Way on the south side, extending as far westward as feasible is included, and that all pathways are DG.
I want to change one word. One word. When you talked about the fences, you said north side?
Fencing on north side.
Get rid of north, because the south side, if you put up fences for any reason, is already required to have animal permeable fences.
Yeah, all right. All fencing is going to be wildlife permeable and not made out of wood or plastic. Is that correct?
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
And the wires, you said you're not putting in the fence.
Yeah, we got rid of those wires.
It's animal permeable. I'll second it.
Right, you got, you got that, Trevor, right? Removing the wires from those...
No wires.
Yeah. And who seconded it? John did. All right, it's first and second. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna be adjourned for ten, well, for seven minutes. I want to, start again at nine thirty. However many minutes that is. Back in session again on the December two Planning Commission meeting. We're at item five C. This is a coastal development permit number seventeen dash one one nine. It's a property at three oh seven oh eight Pacific Coast Highway, and we're here for a CDP and a variance and a demolition permit. Can I have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Jennings and Planning Commissioners. This item is the consideration of CDP seventeen... Oh, typo. That's embarrassing. Seventeen dash one one nine. It included a variance request for reduction of the Esche stream's 100-foot setback located at three oh seven oh eight PCH. Seventeen dash one one nine. Right. The existing development was built in 1968 prior to the implementation of the California Coastal Act, and is bounded by PCH to the north, and north of that is Tranquil Market, and to the south by Pacific Coast Highway, to the west by an existing single-family residence, and to the east by Tranquil Creek and Zuma County Beach. The project proposes the demolition of the existing 3,100 square foot single-family residence. Also proposed for demolition are two unpermitted structures totaling 530 square feet. Also proposed is the construction of a new two-story 20-foot, 24-foot-high 6,100 square foot single-family residence. Swimming pool, spa, and pool equipment, site grading, a new septic system, new landscaping and hardscape, and perimeter walls not to exceed six feet in height. Beachfront development, the rear yard setbacks for beachfront properties are determined by the string line rule, which essentially requires a tangent to be connected from the existing up coast and down coast development for a project site. And any development is not to be sighted seaward of that, of that tangent line. As indicated in your staff report, this project site is the end of, of a string line where there's a cluster of four developed properties, and this site, indicated at the bottom in black, is adjacent to Tranquil Creek and a three-mile stretch of Zuma County Beach. So as indicated, there are three properties up coast, and there is no development down coast. The LCP, however, does allow the planning director to determine the required yards for infill development, and as such has determined that the averaging of the adjacent setbacks for the properties east, west of the project site will create an average, average string line. So I am going to kind of walk you through that averaging process just so you can, to demonstrate how the average was reached. The most landward corner of development is located at three oh seven one two PCH. This corner was determined to be the most landward baseline point for which the additional setbacks were taken. Then in measuring the footprint of the next adjacent property at three oh eight one, one, three oh seven one eight PCH, the existing development is sighted about seven feet seaward of the most landward tangent point. The additional development at three oh seven two four, which was used to create the average, is located about five feet seaward of this baseline point. In averaging the setbacks from the adjacent properties, the average building string line was determined to be four feet seaward of the adjacent development at three oh seven zero one two PCH. The same was done for determining the applicable deck string line, again, taking the existing development, the most landward development at three oh seven one two PCH as the baseline, and then measuring the, the additional decks from this point. The property at three oh seven one two is about 14 feet seaward of this point. At three oh seven one eight is about 17 and a half feet. And the property, the deck for the property at three oh seven two four is about 12 and a half feet. And again, in averaging the setbacks for the associated decks, the applicable average string line for decks is determined to be 14.9 feet. And as you can see, this image shows, I think maybe the next image, yeah, this image shows the, the footprint of the adjacent buildings in solid lines and the footprint of the adjacent decks and dash lines. And then the black solid line indicates the average building string line, and the dotted black line reflects the average deck string line. This image represents the proposed project again in indicating the average building and deck string lines that the existing development, the residence is not sighted seaward of the determined building string line, and the proposed pool... seaward of the determined building string line, and the proposed pool is not located seaward of the determined deck string line. This image reflects the story poles placed at the project site, also shows the context of the existing development along this stretch of PCH. Again, there's a cluster of these four developed properties, and then to the east is a three-mile stretch of Zuma County Beach. And as you can see, the story poles reflect a proposed development that is consistent with the existing development pattern with the other three adjacent properties. As indicated, the property is located adjacent to Tranquas Creek, which is determined to be, to qualify as ESHA. Here are some images. The image on the upper right-hand corner shows an aerial showing the property adjacent to the creek. And then the image in the lower left-hand corner represents, this is another visual of the property adjacent to the creek. With the project site being adjacent to the creek, the property is subject to the ESHA development standards, including the maximum development area and the 100-foot buffer from the stream ESHA. A biological assessment was done for the property, and yielded no ESHA was located on the site, but because the entire site is located within the required 100-foot stream ESHA setback, a variance is requested for the proposed redevelopment. The biological assessment submitted for the project indicates there was a history of bank erosion along the western bank of Tranquas Creek. The biologist recommended, in order to propose a soft engineering solution to abate the additional bank erosion, that native plant species with deep roots be used to stabilize the bank. No work is required within the creek. And here's another image showing the exotic, non-native landscaping that's on the project site that spills over into the creek. This site plan reflects the development area. Again, because the project site is located, the entire site is included within the required 100-foot buffer from the stream, the site is subject to 25% development area, which is based on the parcel size. As indicated on this image, the development area shaded in like a maroon color complies with the required development area for the property, which excludes the leach field, the septic system, the driveway, and the five-foot fire department walkway around the building. After the project received all approvals from the city departments, the ERB reviewed the project in July of this year and offered several comments, one of which is to remove the palm trees from the project site, and the project does include, as proposed, does not include the palm trees. The palm trees will be removed. The biological assessment prepared for the project indicates that the sand areas south of these properties were historically sand dunes. The ERB suggested that this existing ice plant be removed and that the dune area be The project includes a condition of approval that requires the recent metal of a landscape plan to include native species to restore the dune area. The ERB also reiterated the recommendation to use deep-rooted native landscaping along the eastern property line to further stabilize the bank of Tranquas Creek. The ERB also recommended that the applicant or property owner contact LA County to coordinate efforts, pending efforts, to stabilize the creek, restore and stabilize the creek. And after talking to, I think it was Beaches and Harbors, there's a nonprofit that is taking the lead on the restoration and stabilization of Tranquas Creek, but that application has not been formally submitted to the city. They're waiting on funding or something. After the publication of the staff report, staff received correspondence, the first from MRCA, who cited this project as an opportunity to create lateral access across the property. This concern was forwarded to the applicant and property owner, and I believe they're considering the potential offer to dedicate a lateral access easement. Staff also received a letter from the California Coastal Commission, who had a series of comments regarding the project that's before you. The first of which is the issue of sea level rise. In the coastal commission's letter, they cited recent studies that indicate a projected sea level rise between 3.3 feet and 10 feet. The project, after review by the city's coastal engineer, historically has used an 18-foot estimated sea level rise. I'm sorry, that's an 18 feet? 18 inches. 18 inches. And so, you know, estimates for sea level rise is an ongoing policy discussion along the coast of California. As recently as today at 4:00, I get these emails from the coastal commission regarding studies that they're drafting for public comment, and as recent as today at 4:00, they released a statement regarding briefings on sea level rise that will continue into the year 2020. They're in the process of finalizing a guidance document for coastal cities, to finalize this guidance document for adoption. But that discussion is ongoing. It has been ongoing for a while, and it sounds like it will continue until next year before they nail down more detailed projections for sea level rise. The city coastal engineer, however, currently is using a three-to-four-foot estimate. They started using this estimate a couple of months ago. This project was submitted in 2017, and was deemed complete months before the city coastal engineer has begun using the new three-to-four-foot estimate of sea level rise. The coastal engineer has determined that the property does minimize risk for hazards for sea level rise. The coastal commission also had a concern, voiced a concern regarding the need for additional analysis to avoid a shoreline protection device. The project plans include a rendering which might look like a shoreline protection device, but the property, the project has been designed to avoid dependence on a shoreline protection device, and none is proposed with this project. The coastal commission also had a concern regarding the planning departments, the planning directors' string line determination, citing that the nearest building corner should establish the required building and deck string lines rather than the averaging process determined to be appropriate for this project. As mentioned earlier, the LIP gives the planning director authority to determine required yards for infill lots. As demonstrated, the applicable string lines determined by planning staff do not result in development that is seaward of the adjacent development. The coastal commission also had a concern regarding a retaining wall that was originally sighted along the eastern property line, which is adjacent to the creek, with the retaining wall potentially altering the natural drainage course. And the coastal commission requests that there be additional analysis regarding this retaining wall. Staff did inadvertently include the original grading plan that shows a retaining wall, but as indicated on the geotactical review and approval that is attached to your staff report, a grading plan was submitted in April of this year, April 2, I believe, which does not include a retaining wall along the eastern property line. I believe my colleague has printed out copies of the approved grading plan that demonstrate that there is no retaining wall proposed along the eastern property line. And finally, the coastal commission had some comments regarding potential ESHA setbacks, citing that there be some additional sighting alternatives, also maybe including a reduced footprint, or possibly proposing a view corridor that's 20% of the lot width rather than the view corridors that are proposed to be split along the eastern and western property lines. Now, the site is, in a staff response to this comment, the property is under half an acre, is less than 50 feet wide, and is constrained by the 25% development area. The LCP also allows for properties that are less than 50 feet wide to split the view corridor between each side of the property. Staff has analyzed this project and has determined it to be the least environmentally damaging alternative, and any development on this property will be sighted within the required 100-foot buffer. The proposed septic system will include advanced tertiary treatment, which will result in increased water quality, and the front entry gate will now provide view corridors where the existing development provides no view corridor. And here are some renderings of the project, the proposed project. Again, along the south of the development by the pool, it's not a wall, it's on a pile foundation, but this is a rendering showing the proposed project. And with that, staff has determined the project to be consistent with all applicable development standards, including those required for the variance findings, and is able to make the findings in the resolution and recommends the adoption of REZO 19-62, approving the CDP and the associated request for a variance. And that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Disclosures?
Yes, I visited the site with Commissioner Mazep, met with Mr. Kent, got a perspective of what they're trying to do, but didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report.
I visited the site, met Mr. Kent there. I learned that in conjunction with the bridge improvements that Caltrans is going to be doing, they're also talking about something that was unclear, but some kind of revetment or bouldering or something along the side of this property, and there are some uncertainties about what the bridge would do relative to this parcel.
I visited the property with Steve and met with Mr. Kent and their wave-up rush engineer. I did attend several hearings on the bridge, and I will have some questions about that. Otherwise, nothing that wasn't in the staff report.
Nothing to disclose, other than I'm amazed the property, seeing the video when the waters were really flowing out of track, because I'm amazed it's standing. I mean, there was so much, such a volume of water there in the footage that was covered, so I'm glad to see it there.
Another, sorry. I also sent an email to Planner Brooks with some questions, and she had some replies about the area of the parcel for the development area determination, and so we'll talk some about that.
Was there anything factual that was not on the staff report?
Well, yeah, I learned that she's using a legal description for determining the, like a title document, I assume, is what she's looking at, whereas my understanding of the property line here is that it's the mean high tide line and is ambulatory, but has been and will very, very likely continue to be further upslope than the line that they've used on the printed documentation.
Okay, just about the interpretation of how staff reached its conclusions, nothing different about the property.
Yeah, yeah.
I too. I asked Richard Malika the same question, got the same answer.
I did not visit the property, but I do remember being involved at the time that the Tranquas Creek was in flood, and it's been a persistent problem that's had to be faced by the property owner over the years. All right, I think since we have the applicant here, we can reserve our questions and give him a chance to speak. Mr. Kent, you have 15 minutes. You're on. You can save a portion of your time for rebuttal if you'd care to, but the only other speaker is Norm Haney, so make your decision.
I think Reg Brown, too, has signed up.
Okay, he's part of your team, but he's part of your 15 minutes.
Okay, great. All right, so I'm the project architect, my name's Steve Kent. I'll be available to answer questions. Reg Brown is also here. He's been a coastal engineer working in the city for almost 40 years, and he's been instrumental in shaping the policy for coastal engineering that the city is using. So hopefully he'll be helpful to answer your questions. Also, the owner is here tonight, Stacy, and, you know, we started this project a little over two years ago. We submitted to the city two years ago. It's been a long, arduous process, and I think we've designed a beautiful home for Stacy, and we look forward to getting it built. I think, you know, already issues have come up about the safety of the project from the creek and erosion, and we think what we've proposed will be a much better, safer house that's able to withstand all of these concerns from the creek.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are you available just for questions, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, Norm Haney is the next speaker.
Good evening once again, planning commissioners. One of the issues associated with this, first of all, I don't know the owners of the property. I do know Reg Brown, and I was asked to opine with regard to the southerly boundary line, the shoreline boundary line, because that has to deal with the size of the lot, and apparently the size of the house has to do with the size of the lot. The sidelines are clear, the front property line is clear. With regard to the boundary line, it is not the mean high tide line. The Public Resources Code for the State of California requires that a boundary line be easily attainable, so that the people on either side of the line will have a reasonable use of their property. When the mean high tide line can move as much as 10 feet, 15 feet, in some cases 25 feet, in 10 hours in a major storm, that is not easily attainable, and it does not represent the boundary line. So the only case, recent case, is, whether you call it recent or not, it's a 1967 case, the William Kent Estate case, that deals with where the boundary line is along the shoreline in the state of California. And in that case, and it is a published case, so it stands as case law, the judge ruled that it's not the most landward mean high tide line, nor is it the most seaward mean high tide line. It is an average of the mean high tide lines, and that's as far as he was willing to go. And how many mean high tide lines that it takes was not established to create an average. I had a case in front of the State Lands Commission, which is the only agency in the state of California that has the authority to establish a boundary line. And in my particular case on Sea Level Drive, they refused to do that, and I had to sue them in order to get them to do their job. They still refused to do it. Ultimately, it went to the lower court, in which the lower court agreed that it was an average. When it went to the higher court, the higher court said, "I'm not going to rule on where the boundary line is, but I am going to rule you have to be landward of the most landward mean high tide line," which is different than the boundary line. So those are my comments today. If anyone has questions... If anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Norm. You have 13 minutes left, if you'd like to respond now, but you can just wait for questions if you prefer. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience who wants to address this project? All right, here we're done, we're going to close. What? Oh, Ms. Klein, come up. You have to come to the microphone so that you can be recorded.
I just wanted you to mention, or need to mention, and let you guys know, that the whole front of the property, you know, we've been in this GAD, and they're part of the GAD, and because they're part of the GAD, they've been paying, I don't know, $27,000 in their taxes every year to bring more sand in. They are part of that bring more sand in. So when we get this bring more sand in, maybe, I hope I'm still alive, but when that happens, her property will have over 100 front feet more of sand than it has right now, because she's been paying for it for the last eight years. And it is going to be her family home eventually, because she is one of the fire victims. She's building a house on Harvester who she's hoping to live in it. She may not be able to afford to live in it, but this is a house that she was hoping one day to be able to live as a family, because we live on Broad Beach, as people know, and we are also paying into the GAD. So two of our families are basically paying literally almost millions of dollars to get more sand, ESHA, everything that you guys want this property to have, and it will have it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to address the commission on this property? All right, then we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission table. Questions or comments, or John?
No, I have a question to Norm, I mean Trevor. Norm, this is a question I had of Richard Malika. There's a 25%, you have to determine your square footage, and Norm just explained it's the difference between the, the average of the mean high tide lines is your boundary. And then Richard explained to me, no, it's whatever it says on the deed, basically, and... But I was wondering how you claim the ocean? Can a person own the ocean?
I don't think it's a question of ownership. I mean, what's, what the, the code says here is that it's the parcel size, and so the interpretation here is what is the parcel size? It's not defined in the LIP.
The, the term parcel is not defined, but the term lot describes the word parcel, and it refers to the original subdivision, or deed, or, you know, that sort of thing. And so we turn to the definitions to help us understand what, how to make that calculation. So we use the, the parcel size as shown on the assessor maps.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, on, on that issue, I think there's no disputing that in terms of ownership and whose land it is, that that boundary is the mean high tide line, wherever it happens to be and however that's interpreted. Everything, it's how it's interpreted, and how you just said, and if you do it exactly as you just said, we have seven high tide, mean high tide lines marked on the plan here, ranging from the one they chose at 322 feet length of a parcel, out to 406, some, or, out, well, the mark that they put in is at 406 and a half feet. You take the average, as you said, the length would be 380 feet, so 26 and a half feet short of what they've used. So even if you use that methodology, they're still, they're still shy of that by a substantial amount. Then also on the question of the total development area, and I raised this in my email, you, Ms. Brooks, you mentioned that you were not counting some of the walk-around area for the fire department as the development area, but as I read the definition of that development area, that is not among the things that are excluded. You get, you basically get the, where is it here? The driveway, the roadway not to exceed 20 feet wide, and one hammerhead safety turnaround, but there's no discussion about excluding the five-foot walk-around. So that, that too would make a big difference in what the actual development area is. Was there any clarity on that?
Back to the parcel size question, the, the way this has been calculated in the past has been to use the parcel size as shown on the assessors' maps. That's, that's the, it's based on the definition in the code, and it's also based on past practice of things that the commission has approved. With respect to the development area and the five-foot walk-around, the commission has, has approved, including, no, excluding the five-foot walk-around from the development area in the past, in cases where lots are constrained and situations like that. And it's based, it's, it's unusual to have a development area constraint on a beachfront lot, that just doesn't come up very often, but where it's happened in the past is when, and it's based on the exclusion of engineered slopes from the development area, and so that's essentially the kind of extrapolation of doing it in this case.
Well, I, I would point out that even if you, even if you use the most restrictive size for the development area, you'd still have 3,800 and change to play with, so it's not like this would be a taking or something to interpret it more.
Well, just to add a little historical perspective, when I, when the Coastal Commission was writing this up, and we were having hearings on it, and remember, the, the initial take was that they weren't going to exclude anything, that hammerheads and driveways were all going to be included in development area, and those of us who were representing the city at the time said, "Well, wait a minute, that's, it's going to be all driveway and hammerhead turnarounds." And so Peter Douglas at the time said, "Okay, fine, we can exclude those things," and, and the idea was you were excluding those things that were mandated as a result of public safety and, and safety of the fire department, so on forth, so, although it wasn't explicitly mentioned, the five-foot walk-arounds were along the lines of the same sorts of things that we were talking about, the driveways and the, the 20-foot driveways and the, and the hammerhead turnarounds, because those were also things that were required by fire department to practice.
Well, I, I would just suggest then, though, that they do itemize the things and they don't say some general thing like, "And other similar safety-related things," or something along those lines.
No, they don't, it's just that that's, I'm just saying that that's the way it was discussed and worked out at the time that, that the provisions were put in place. We didn't sit around and say, "And other related things," but that's neither here nor there. John?
What, what wave-up brush numbered, was used in this? Was it 17 inches or four feet?
It was 18 inches.
Okay, so, said, you, you said that the city has been using four feet, which...
They started doing that a couple months ago.
Yeah, but we're hearing it right now. The question...
Right, the, the reason for the difference is that the application was submitted in 2017, it was deemed complete back in July, and so this change to this more restrictive sea level rise assumption was not introduced to the coastal engineering guidelines until, well, two months ago would be September, September, October.
Yeah.
So the project had already been deemed complete, and so it's one of those circumstances where they would be redesigning for a three-foot difference, four-foot difference project compared to when they started.
Well, Reg Brown is here if you have a question.
No, I, I trust what the body says. What I want to know is, how come nobody tells us? When you change a standard that important, we even had a hearing on it, nobody's ever said, "Hey, it's four feet now." I mean, when are we supposed to figure this out?
Well, they're in the process of developing the guidelines, they're, they have not been reduced to writing yet, but in all of the submittal, the coastal engineering staff, geotechnical staff, so they're in the process of updating the, the guidelines now.
If I could just clarify too, the Coastal Commission guidelines that you refer to as being in the process of being finalized...
No, I'm not talking, I'm talking about the city's guidelines.
No, no, that she's, that she, I know, I realize that, that she mentioned in the, in the intro, they're being, in the process, an update is being finalized. The existing guidelines have been in effect for a couple years, I believe, that, they're, they're guidelines, policy guidelines, and they say 40 inches to 80 inches, and those have been in effect, and the ones that they're in the process of finalizing is the one that's, whatever, six feet, something to 10 feet. So it, it has already been 40 inches.
It's, it's 10 minutes after 11, we've got another applicant to go for, so let's try to cut to the chase and see where we're going on this, and I hate to cut you off, but we're going to start getting through our agenda.
Okay, oh, well, I, I would also, moving towards a motion...
Okay, that would be great.
To deny, based on the TDA, also based on the string line methodology, it seems absurd to me. It seems like if you don't have the point on the other side of the building, you don't torture the logic and say, "Let's, let's average it with houses that aren't adjacent to it." It's about what's adjacent to it. And so I, it seems to me you would just take the point right next to it without having to go through the extra machinations.
Okay, so that's, that is your motion to deny on those, the basis of those two items, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Not yet, no. Not yet. Can we make some more comments or questions?
Well, no, actually, in theory, it has to get a second before you can discuss it, but if you, you can second it for the purposes of discussion if you'd like.
For discussion, yeah.
But I need a second.
I'll second it for discussion. I have many more questions, but number one, the, the bridge itself has been, and Caltrans has scheduled it, it's been designed, the length and everything, did we consider that when we did this? Because it totally is going to change that river, it's going to be twice as long.
Are you talking about the replacement of Trancas Bridge?
Right.
As mentioned, the project has been in the, this project has been in the process since 2017, however, the, Caltrans just recently submitted their CDP application for the bridge replacement like two weeks ago, so staff is just beginning to review that application.
But did you look at it at all? I mean, is this, is this house going to wash away? I mean, it's, this is a huge change, and it doesn't look like we looked at it.
Yeah, I would note that the current bank is, seems largely dictated by the wall on the, on the underside of the bridge, that the bridge is a channel, and you're not going to get radically more erosion to the west side because the water wants to come straight out, but if the footing for the bridge were five or 10 feet further west than the current bridge, then you'd have a real problem. So his, his point about where exactly is that bridge footing line up says a lot about whether you have an embankment a few years from now or whether it's gone.
Caltrans is going to have to work very closely with this property owner through this, their whole process of designing the bridge project, and, I mean, at this point, I don't know where they're at with discussions, I don't know if the architect wants to address this, but all we have before us today is the, the house project, and so that, those are definitely details that have to be worked out.
Well, they, I, I mean, you just said that they, they applied for the bridge of the CDP, it's designed.
Two weeks ago, though, and so, and I know...
Well, yeah, but they can't work with them after it's...
There have been, there have been public meetings that Caltrans has held on this project, and I know they've been in touch with individual property owners, and so I, at this point, I don't know if the architect wants to make mention of anything, but presumably they're asking Caltrans the same questions.
Well, I just want to touch bases.
All right, unless it's going to a motion that you would, you would recommend denial based upon the fact that the bridge hasn't been designed yet and we don't know the effect of it, let's try to keep it to the two sources that, of, of discussion that are, that were under. One is the, is the appropriate square footage allowable to the house, the development area allowable for the house, and the other is, what was the second one?
String line.
String line, okay.
Now, another question, though, on other factors.
John, seriously.
Seriously, it's 10:15.
Yes, I know, and we're going to start it before 10:30, so we've got to move along.
Okay, I just have some questions. Is the fence permeable in the front? Is it 42 inches?
It is, except for that which is included in, or goes across the view corridor. The area of the fence that goes across the view corridor is completely clear, it's transparent.
Is there any comment on the Coastal Commission's comment about the pool being a protected device?
I believe they were looking at a rendering that looks like the pool has a wall associated with it, but there's no wall. There's no shoreline protection device or anything that would serve as a shoreline protection device associated with this project.
I think they were talking about the pool. Okay, I just have a quick...
They were talking about the pool. The rendering looks like a wall, maybe the architect can clarify the actual pile foundation associated with the pool, but there's no wall.
I would like to ask you a question anyway. Come up to the mic. We get letters from the Coastal Commission all the time. Rarely do we get one that is opposed to your project. You see yourself being able to defend this project before the Coastal Commission, if they appeal it, and are there any changes? We always, I always want to give people a, a chance to get a continuance and do whatever they want to do to make people happy. Do you foresee doing that at all, or should we just go on and assume you want to just go forward?
Well, I, the Coastal Commission, as you know, made a few points, some of them were big misunderstandings, like they thought we were proposing a seawall when we weren't, and this whole issue of the pool...
Well, no, it's a very simple, you don't need to explain it all.
Yeah.
It's just sometimes applicants want to take another month and figure out what the coastal's going to do to them or something, and I haven't seen a nasty letter like that one for a while, so I'm just saying, before we vote, do you have any desire for a continuance? That's a simple question.
No, because I think it boils down to the string line determination, which is up to the city planner, and it also boils down to this coastal rise and wave-up brush, which is a moving target that keeps going, and we submitted two years ago, well before any of these policies went into effect.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. I'd like to add one note about the point that you brought up about Trancas Creek and the bridge improvements. I'd just like to make everyone aware that the house that's being proposed is elevated up, it's a big concrete podium sitting on piles, it's six feet higher than the existing house, and it's going to be much safer, because if the creek does erode, it could even wash under the structure, and it will not affect the, the safety of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, another quick one on that, Mr. Kent. Is that what then these illustrations are showing, how you've kind of got these, what those cuts could flow under the house, is that effectively would go kind of laterally, perpendicular to the flow of the stream?
Yes, yeah, the house is supported by a series of concrete piles, and it's elevated up in the air.
And then these, these illustrations are what's under the structure in the grading plan that was submitted? I was trying to, I was trying to interpret what I'm looking at here. These cuts you show under the structure, that would, I know it's a long distance, but would that allow flow underneath the structure then?
Yes.
And so it would kind of flow under and then back out towards the ocean, maybe just a little more explanation, it looks like?
Well, the, the mouth of the creek has gotten wider and smaller over time, and this would accommodate that. And Reg is more qualified to answer those questions.
Yeah, if you could just briefly, thank you, Reg.
Reg Brown, Pacific Engineering Group, I'm the project coastal engineer. The elevation of the finished floor of the existing house today is 13 and a half feet, that's the elevation. Nothing on the proposed residence is going to be below 14. So the lowest, the bottom of the lowest horizontal member is going to be at elevation 14, that includes the pool. That allows for both the creek and the ocean to go underneath the house, okay, freely, and, you know, I don't believe that the, the creek will continue to erode that side, but if it does, it's, the only thing it'll, it'll do is go underneath this house, okay? The new house finished floor is proposed at 19 and a half, that's six feet above the existing finished floor, so.
Okay, so Commissioner Hill's motion is based... Okay, so Commissioner Hill's motion is based upon structure size, based upon the lot size, allowable development area.
Right.
And the.
String line.
String line, right. So you've seconded it, is there further discussion on those issues?
Yeah, on the string line, we had an illustration, I thought, that showed what the, he had something which showed the, the string line for the structure and for the decks, did that show the average only, did it also show the calculation based on just the neighboring property that Commissioner Hill is asking for? I just wanna kinda see how much past that calculation we're, we're talking about.
Four feet and one foot.
Yeah, just the neighbor?
I, I would add too that, you know, with, with a big mass on this, whatever the size house it is, based on whatever development area you, you end up with in the end, you're now really close to the house next door and blocking a lot of views, such that the difference of four feet on the string line in terms of that second house's view and exposure is significant, it's not, I mean, they'd, they'd be pretty blocked off the way this is designed.
Well, and by a similar argument, then if that structure to their, what their north, I guess, if they wanted to rebuild and they'd come up to a new string line, this establishes a new string line on that neighbor, yeah.
Yeah, Ted, I have to. Come up.
Just so you're aware, the existing house that's there is four feet out from the house that we're proposing, so we're already losing four feet. The neighbor that Mr. Hill is referring to is already set back eight feet from the existing house structure, and we're gonna be halfway in between those two distances, so we're reducing from what's there existing already. Also, I'd point out, if you look at the plan, the first floor is well back of that string line, so we're only talking about the second floor extending out to the string line. If you look at the first floor on the plan up there, it's actually behind the, the corner of the adjacent house, so that's gonna have less of an impact on, on the view.
And just, when, when we looked at that, when we did the site visit, the house that's next to them, all the view is going straight out to the ocean, just, there's no side piece there, so the impact on that, I, I don't know, I don't think there will be one. Okay, so the size of the house is, is the issue now.
Thank you.
The development area, they allow development area. Let's vote.
Okay, can, can, can I confirm the motion? Would this be to direct staff to return with a resolution denying the project based on the parcel size should be determined differently? How did you want the parcel size determined?
Well, the, the crux of it is really the development area, which is both about the parcel size and about how they've defined it with the walkarounds and so forth.
So there's two issues, twenty-five percent of the, of the lot size being the, the allowable development area, because that's less than the ten thousand square feet, and, and the walk-around area being included.
Okay, walk-around area included, and what is the, what are you defining the parcel size as if it's not the tax assessor parcel?
It's the, the mean high tide, right?
Average mean.
And, and what, what Norm pointed out is that a judge has said, well, we'll take the lowest and the highest and average them, and if we come out with that, then the parcel would be three hundred and eighty feet long, they've said it's three hundred and twenty-two, or I'm sorry, they've said it's four hundred and six.
And your number would be what?
Three hundred and eighty.
And you're underneath your total.
And the actual, the, the latest high tide line is three twenty-two.
Yeah, so if you, I did a quick calculation, and if you look at the difference between what Mr. Hill's talking about and where our surveyors put the parcel size, and you take twenty-five percent of that, it's still gonna be less than what we're.
The max.
We're, we're, our allowed maximum, according to what it was calculated, is forty-eight and change, we're at forty-three and change. If you talk about accounting for this difference, it's still gonna be within the allowable development size or parcel size.
I calculated a TDA of thirty-eight and change.
Okay.
But that, but that's based on the most landward mean-high-tide line, that's not based on, on what Norm was talking about.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
True, but it's also, it wasn't accounting for the walk-around.
So, so your determination is the parcel size would be three hundred and twenty feet? Is that what you?
Three eighty.
A three hundred and eighty depth?
Yeah.
What does that calculate out to? Would he be under? Can we do quick math on that?
So the, the lot area would be eighteen thousand fifty square feet, and twenty-five percent of that would be four thousand five hundred and twelve square feet. So the project as proposed is still less than that, if we wanted to use the averaging of the mean-high-tide lines to determine the lot area.
But then what about the, the walk-around areas?
Yeah, do we have an estimate on that, square footage?
I do not.
You're saying it would be forty-five hundred?
You should be aware that the walk-around area on the west side wouldn't come into play anyway, because that's on natural grade, it's natural soil, it's not, it's considered landscaping, so we're only talking about the strip of the walkway on the east side, and that's about five feet by sixty feet? So.
That's three hundred square.
Three hundred square feet.
So that'd be three hundred square feet added on to, what were we, so it'd be forty-six, seventy-two versus, you're saying the allowed would be forty-five hundred? So a hundred and seventy-two square feet over is your calculation?
I'm, I'm skeptical that, that you could say the, the west side is graded, it's, is not graded, it's, the whole lot is graded, I don't know how you get away with saying some of it hasn't been, how, how some of it's natural slope.
We're not grading it, it's on, it's elevated on piles, and, and these steps on the west side just go down to natural grade.
Your walking path would be all elevated, all up on piles?
It, it, it would be all elevated except for this portion of, of the west.
And which, which picture are you looking at, just so we can see the same?
The main.
Renika, could you bring the site plan back up?
There you go.
Yeah.
So this would be, oh, well, this is an older.
Chris, I wanna remind you, we have two and a half minutes.
Are you, Steve, do you think you could fit the development area if you had to include the five-foot walk-around within what they're talking about as the twenty-five percent? So the motion or the proposed, his, Commissioner Hill's proposal is not gonna radically change your design?
Correct.
I think that's what he's saying, so it, it may come down to just the string line question.
So, to clarify, on the first ground, are, are we, are you gonna insist that it's forty-five hundred square feet, that he has to reduce it to that amount, or are we saying that forty-six, seventy-two would be okay?
It's your motion.
I'd, I'd wanna reduce to the, to the stated amount, and that would probably be achieved regardless by fixing the string line.
Okay, so you're, you're saying.
The string line isn't related to the parcel size?
Isn't, isn't the motion denial?
In terms of the.
It's a motion to deny.
Just laying out the grounds for why, for the denial.
Right, and they've, they've just, they've just made a good case that they could, they could make the TDA work.
Even with your determination of the parcel size?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
So.
But so, so in the interest of simplicity and time, let's focus on the string line.
One minute.
And could I just point out, the string line only affects the second floor, not the first?
The fastest way to get this is to vote on it, because we can take a straw vote, but that's the same thing as getting a vote on it. So the motion is to deny the project based upon the string line, is that correct?
What would be the, the, the grounds for what the string line should be?
This should be the nearest, up, up.
Corner of the nearest house, yeah.
And do you wanna offer the applicant an opportunity to make an adjustment to that?
I did, I already did.
Sure.
Yeah, so if it boiled down to that, we could work with that, but, and be aware, the, like I've pointed out, the, the property is well behind the string line on the first floor, so we're only talking about the string line affecting the second floor.
I, I don't think that's material.
Maybe, maybe the straw vote is the way to go. I'm not gonna support Commissioner Hill's position on this, Steve is not gonna support it, is there another one who is unwilling to support it?
Oh, well.
Okay. And the reason, Commissioner, are we, we're not gonna do another one, ten or over, it's up to you.
If we do it in thirty seconds, we can.
Okay. So, so, but now Commissioner Hill hasn't got a motion anymore.
Okay, I move, we approve it.
Staff's recommendation?
Second.
Further discussion? Call a roll, please.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look, we're not gonna send these people home with all of our consultants again, let's do it.
Yeah, let's go.
All right. This is item five D, coastal development permit nineteen dash oh four oh. It's got a variance and a site plan review and a demolition permit and an offer to dedicate. This is the property at two seven five three zero Pacific Coast Highway, within the appealable coastal zone. Staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission, I'll try to keep this presentation as short as possible. The project before you is a project that was approved by the planning commission three and a half years ago, and about six months ago, it inadvertently expired immediately after the applicant obtained plan check approval from the building safety division. We realized that the application, about two weeks after that, we realized the application had expired, and the applicant submitted a new application, this is a new application for a project that has been before the planning commission before, but we're considering this as a new and not a time extension. The subject parcel is a bluff top property, the building pad, the building pad for this project is wedged between two streams on either side of the property. There is a bluff to the south and there's also PCH to the north. Along the north, there's also a six-foot natural berm that helps screen the majority of the proposed residence. There is an existing single-family residence that's eight hundred and thirty-nine square feet, that was built in nineteen forty, and there's an existing circular driveway. The proposed project includes the demolition of that existing residence and includes the construction of a new single-family residence and associated development, and the proposed development would be within the flattest portion of the property. However, there are some portions of the proposed development that are on slopes that are between three to one and two and a half to one. This is due because, due to the, these type of slopes are in between the building pad. However, no portion of the proposed development is proposed on slopes that are on varying slopes steeper than two and a half to one. The six-foot tall berm along PCH, PCH as mentioned before, helps screen most of the proposed residence from PCH. Site plan review is requested for portions of the residence to exceed eighteen feet in height, and there's also proposed variance for the upper level, an upper level element of the house located somewhere along the middle of the residence that projects above the PCH road grade elevation. The portion of the residence projecting above the road grade elevation is mostly obstructed by the six-foot berm when seen on a ninety-degree angle from PCH. However, this portion of the residence will obstruct blue water views across the two canyons, so the views across the two canyons on either side of the residence. As designed, the house has been designed to avoid the protected views of surrounding residents. The applicant provided an exhibit to show in red, this exhibit shows in red the areas of the area above eighteen, excuse me, the area above the road grade elevation that currently obstructs blue water views from PCH, and these exhibits also show the areas that will be preserved below road grade elevation that are within the view corridors that they're proposing to preserve. And in all, the areas that they're proposing to preserve are greater than those that they will be obstructed by the portion above road grade elevation. They also provide, provided some perspective drawings to show the visual impacts of the proposed residence from PCH. And there's also here other perspective drawings showing those view impacts, and we have pictures taken from the site when the story poles were installed, when the house was originally approved. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopts planning commission, resolution number nineteen dash zero six, determining the project is category exem from sequo, and approving the project as condition, and the applicant and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Disclosures. Commissioner Mazza and I visited the site, looked at the house, walked the property, didn't learn anything that wasn't already in the staff report. Mr. Hill?
Same.
Same, except I, I also heard the project three years ago and voted against it.
No disclosures?
Yes, like Commissioner Mazza, I also heard the project three years ago. Don't remember how I voted, or how you voted for that matter. Okay. The only speakers are the applicant team. Mr. Dunning, you have fifteen minutes.
John Henning?
Sure.
And then Dunning is the architect, and he'll be helping me.
You're the attorney.
My name's John Henning, I represent two seven five three zero PCH Property LLC, which is the owner of, of this site, and my client's representative and actually the managing member of the LLC is here with me, Bob Herdick, and I'm back. I also have Aiden Dunning, who is the project architect. We're gonna speak for about ten minutes or so and then reserve time for any rebuttal, although it doesn't sound like we have anybody to rebut, so we may carry on a little longer than that. You're looking right now at a bird's eye view of the site, and I emphasize bird's eye because you'd have to be a bird to actually see that, and that's really the key thing about this project that makes it different than a lot of what you're presented with. This is a house that's very hard to actually see from any public right-of-way or the beach. From PCH, as staff pointed out, there's a berm that runs most of the width of the property, it's actually a natural remnant probably from when PCH was cut way back when, essentially, you can see it from the other side of PCH, there's another berm on the other side, probably PCH was cut through and that berm remained, and that berm acts as a natural protector of, against views to the house from PCH. Now, of course, there are points when you're on PCH where you get past that berm on either side, east or west, and there is a view that opens up, and at that point, as staff pointed out, you can see the house, but we've tried to preserve view corridors in those areas, and I'll get into that in a minute. What you're looking at here is actually a perspective, like I say, you'd have to be a bird, or maybe the neighbor to the east could see something similar to this, even though they're significantly higher than us. But this gives you a sense of the attempts that the designer has, has made to make this a natural-looking site. We have a, a green roof that is actually covering the entire first story or lower level of the project, so that when people look through the site toward the ocean from the two view corridors on PCH, they'll actually see gra, natural plantings, it won't be grass, it won't look like that really, but natural plantings that are consistent with the nearby topography and, and, and the vegetation on the site, so that what they really, they won't really even sense that there's a house there and, on the lower level. The other thing that you can't really tell from this, this particular slide is that when you're at the ocean on the beach and you're looking up at this, you can't actually see any of what we're looking at here, it's all completely invisible to you. Maybe we could go to slide two, or is this my little, I've never done this before, is this what I do? Press this, or, oh, that's, okay, I go to this. There you go, okay, good, I can do this myself. So this is the site topography, it shows you how steep the site is as it approaches the ocean, the ocean is, of course, to the left. The, the development that's shown on. The development that's shown on this particular slide is not exactly what we've proposed. This was an earlier design study that was used with staff, but it's a good just drawing because it shows the actual grade lines and how steep the site is. The berm is also shown there on the right-hand side, that's the higher part of the berm, right there. Let me show you the view from the beach. So this is a photograph that was just taken last week that shows the existing house from the beach. And as you can see, all you can really see is just the very top edge of the existing house. And then there's a view platform that is also visible. That view platform is going to be demolished because it's too close to the bluff. Nobody wants it to be there, so, or at least the city doesn't want it to be there, and it's certainly not going to be there. So we have essentially pushed the development significantly farther back. On this, on this slide, if I can use my little pointer here. No, the red point. There it is, okay. So, right there, there's a faint kind of rectangle, that's very far forward of the actual development. That's the existing house. We're going to develop way back from that, so that you won't see nearly as much of the development as you even see now. This is what you see from PCH, this is actually the berm. This comes right off of Google Maps, I'm sure you all, it looks familiar to all of you. I thought that was the most honest way of portraying this because we didn't, you know, we didn't stage this photograph. It's probably taken from a little higher than six feet, because you know those little cars that drive around for Google Maps, that camera is probably eight or nine feet in the air. So this isn't really what you'd be seeing if you were walking or bicycling down PCH, or if you were in a car, you would probably view the berm as sticking up more than you do here. But it just gives you a sense of how big that berm is. The original project was approved in April 2016. As staff has said, it inadvertently expired, and that doesn't mean that staff inadvertently expired the permit. What essentially happened was there was a misunderstanding about when the permit actually expired. We pushed it to the limit, we were trying to get through Plan Check. The Woolsey Fire, because of the timing of the later submittals of our Plan Check, the Woolsey Fire kind of caused some long delays, especially with the public works. There was one 79-day period we waited for comments. And so things got pushed right up until the end of the three-year period. I'm afraid we made the mistake of not asking for an extension, which would have been routinely granted by staff. That's the irony of all this, we wouldn't even be here if we had just asked for the extension before the expiration. We would have gotten an extension. Instead, because we didn't ask, staff said you've got to start from scratch and apply again, and that's what we're doing. Design changes, so, oops, let's see here, my order is messed up, excuse me. Okay, this is another view of the, of the second floor of the house and the way the berm is oriented toward and blocks the views of the second floor. This is a slide that shows you some design changes, which are essentially nil. We didn't change the project. All that's been changed is the most minor tweaks to the footprint of certain floors to deal with a couple of requirements that came up during the Plan Check process, where the city had changed its method for measuring the thickness of walls, which resulted in some of our square footages increasing because they considered, they required us to measure from a different part of the wall, which of course we did. And when we were faced with that requirement, we were forced to reduce the size of other square footages. We didn't just try to keep that extra square footage, we reduced the footprint. So there's some, if you can see how the brown lines are the old, the old permit, and then the gray box is the, is the new permit. And as you can see, the gray box is smaller than the, than the brown lines almost everywhere. And so there's no change to view impacts. If anything, these minor changes have just slightly improved views through the site. The basement was changed right here, the one thing that does look significantly different down is, I just don't know where my pointer is, there it is. The basement has changed, but the basement's not visible to the public. It was moved because it, by moving it, we reduced the amount of grading we had to do on the site, and we also had to increase the basement in order to accommodate some new mechanical equipment that we had not originally realized we needed. TDSF for the site is 41 square feet more than it was before, that's it. So. Neighborhood compatibility, I'd like to just show you some slide here, this is in your packet. This shows you what's going on with the other neighbors along this stretch of PCH that are between the ocean and PCH that are similarly situated to us. The blue means sites where it's a two-story house. As you can see, every, almost every other site that's similarly situated to us and near us has a two-story project on it. And actually, the gray ones are actually three or four stories. The only property that has anything under two stories is the green site, which is right next to us. They have a one-story house nominally, but if you're actually on the site, and I know several commissioners came, you can actually look up at the house that is only one story. It's still towering way above you, that house is quite high. And so we are way below, in almost every way you could measure it, the elevations of other houses on that strip. The square footage is, this, there's a table here, we went through every single site and determined the Assessor's square footage. The average square footage is 8,512 square feet. And I recognize that TDSF and Assessor are not the same numbers. It's impossible to get TDSF for all those other sites because they were all permitted at different times, and the records that reflect TDSF would be very difficult to reconcile. It's kind of like comparing apples and oranges. But the Assessor has projects that average that are 8,500 square feet. The one to the left, which is very large and gray, that has at least 21,000 square feet of development on it and probably closer to 40,000. We can't get the actual Assessor's numbers for that. All the other sites, as you can see, are actually quite large. Our site's 1.75 acres, other sites in that strip are anywhere from 1 to 3 acres. These are actually very large lots. And this allows us to conceal the project in the way that we've done. In terms of the height above natural grade, there's an exhibit that we gave to staff that didn't actually get into your packet, but this shows you how at no place on the site is the house more than 18 feet above existing natural grade. It is 24 feet from finished grade in the part of the property where, where the second floor is, but in that location, the height above natural grade is only 18 feet. So that gives you another sense of the scale. That, again, really departs from other houses in the, in the immediate vicinity. Here's another part of the exhibit that you have in your packet, it's just been severed from, to make things simpler. This is a view of a bird's eye view from above the beach. You can see how large some of these houses are that are near us and how, how they really look very much like two or three-story houses. Our house isn't really, isn't going to look like that at all, or birds. We asking for a variance, it isn't a height variance that we're asking for. We're asking for a variance to allow us to vary from the LIP, which requires us to not exceed and have a roof elevation that's higher than Pacific Coast Highway. We're asking for a variance to allow us to have the second or the upper floor, if you will, which only is about 1,000 square feet and consists of a master bedroom suite to be above PCH. And as we've said, because of the way the site is situated and the fact that that particular floor is in the center of the site, it is largely blocked by the berm, so you don't even see it. And if you get past the berm and you do see it, it's going to read like a one-story house, not like a two or three-story house. The view corridors, this is an exhibit that was in the slideshow that staff did. And this shows the green areas where the two-story section is. You can see how small that is in comparison to the site and to the rest of the development. The view corridors are defined by the proximity to that particular story. The, the blue areas you see here are not the actual view corridors that are 20, 40% of the site. There's actually a dotted line that's inward from that, that doesn't, that basically is marked by the edge of the second story that constitutes two view corridors, one east, one west, or one north, one south, depending on what you look at it. And 20% of the frontage up here, that's about 20%, more than 20% of the frontage, and this is about 20% of the frontage down here. So we have two view corridors that make up 40% of the frontage that gets you around the second story. And by adding the second story, we were able to avoid a situation where we built low and flat on the site. This, I think, is a, this is another exhibit that was used for purposes of design early on. That, that low, flat house you see there is what we could build without a variance. We would be able to get the same amount of square footage, but we'd have to push it down and widen it out. And by designing, by doing what we've done, we've created a situation more like this, where there's a second story, which does go up into the sky a little bit, but it, it opens up a whole area here on both sides that's blue. That's blue-water views in the view corridors that we set up. And I recognize view corridors aren't technically necessarily required on this site, but we've created them in an attempt to meet the intent of the view, of the various view protections and the ordinances. There's a vegetative roof, you can see that, that's 76% of the footprint of the site. This, these are bluff setback lines. There were some questions at the site visit about where our setback lines were. There's a setback line that was defined by the geologist, the geotechnical expert, which is to the left. That's closer to the ocean, right at the top of the steepest part of the bluff. And then there's a further inward setback line that we're following. And as you, as I've said, we are, we're 50 feet back from that, that further inward line, which is here. We're 50 feet back from that, and even at 50 feet back, all we are is a deck and a pool, and you have to go another 70 feet to get to the first floor, and then another 70 feet past that to get to the second floor. It's all very stepped, which minimizes views from the ocean, essentially eliminates views from the ocean. A neighbor simulation was done and, and the concerns were resolved, and we don't know of any neighbors that are opposed to the project. I'm out of time, but we can answer any questions, and I have Aiden with me, and we can talk about green building design if somebody wants to know about that.
Okay, thank you very much, never let a lawyer go first. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the commission on this project? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion of the presentation, and we'll go back to the commission table, and I see Steve has his, okay, Steve?
Okay, just two quick ones, Adrian. In the staff report, you say, page two. The problem is six-foot berm parallel immediately adjacent to Pacific Coast Highway will obstruct the view of proposed residence from a 90-degree angle. What does that mean?
So if you were, if you were motorists passing by this property and you were looking 90 degrees from your vehicle this way?
Yeah.
That berm would block all of the house. So at a 90-degree angle, that berm will essentially block the entire house, including that portion that's projected above the road grade elevation. It's only when you are
Got it, okay.
On either side of that berm and at a different angle that you're able to see the house.
Okay, I tried to, I thought it was some significance, I was trying to look, you know, if you do this, well, here's a little footnote that says, you know, I made that up, so I know that I don't have to go search in it. Second thing, is there anything in the resolution that requires them to keep that berm there? It's part of the highway. I don't know.
I can check, I don't, I'm not sure if there is something in the resolution, but I can check.
It may well be in the Caltrans right away.
I actually had the same question the first time this came through here three years ago about whether the grading plan was going to, you know, obliterate the berm, and then we based this variance on that, and the grading plan retains the berm. I don't know if there's a condition that specifically addresses it, but I had the same question.
And, and is it on the property, or is that a Caltrans berm? We know who owns it?
Yeah, it's on the property.
So they, they've got control over it?
Correct.
Would you like to ask him a question?
No.
All right, Mr. Hill?
Yeah. One, one other disclosure, that we also talked about the possibility that it looked like you probably want to thin out the eucalyptus some, and that would be part of what, what the landscape plan would want, but that maybe there might be eucalypts that you might want to keep for monarch habitat, pending a bio-review, that that was just something we talked about. Yeah, I, I see a way that could maybe kill a few birds. I wish there was a better expression than that, but if, if there, if there was resistance, I could see a potential solution to something, but maybe I'll wait and hold that and just see, see what other people have.
John?
For 18 years, I lived about 12 houses north of this. And I've walked that beach probably 2,000, 3,000 times. Richard, or Adrian, how did you determine there was a bluff there? Because in that area, there are four canyons. This is one of them. It's not contiguous to any other house on that bluff as a bluff. And other houses have been determined to be in canyons. And we had a house for Eisner once, where we said, gee, if it doesn't overlook the ocean in the front, it's not a bluff, can't count it. So how did we count, how did we figure that was bluff?
We, actually, it was, like you mentioned, it was complicated in this case to figure out where the bluff was, because they have two canyons on, on either side of their building pad. And so there are canyon slopes running on both sides of the property. And then there's a slope that then faces the ocean. And so we collaborated with city geotechnical staff to find out the portion of the slope that was subject to wave action and determine that that portion of the slope was a coastal bluff. And then we also looked at area photos, historical area photos that show us where the bluffs were for the adjacent properties, to come up with some sort of string line on those properties. And we also looked at this property, and we did a side visit with, I'm not, I'm not sure if it was Bonnie, but if not, it was a former, may have been, may have been you. We walked the site, and based on the physical conditions of the property and the topography, we determined where we thought the natural break of the slope was, which was just north of a deck that had been built there without permits. And as part of this project, they're conditioned to remove that deck, which was further landward than the portion of the slope that was subject to wave action that the city geotechnical staff had identified.
Well, the reason why, I, I just want to, trying to figure out how you became, became a bluff, because where the wave action is, it certainly is not a bluff. And where you drew the string line is substantially lower than adjacent bluffs. And the property has deeper veins over most of the property, and the only flat spot is very small up by the highway. It has no similarity to any bluffs around there, none. So you have to say that to draw a string line, you have to say there's a bluff in between. We're not, and there isn't. So the only point I make is, we don't need to have restrictions on bluff setbacks, because there is no bluff. Now.
Chair Jennings, one thing, we had two additional disclosures that came after the public hearing. I would recommend that we allow the applicant to comment on the disclosure just briefly, if they had anything they wanted to address from the disclosures.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Mazza both made disclosures that were after the public hearing. The point of disclosures is that they can be commented on by the public since they denied that opportunity, just a brief opportunity, if they want to address.
Right, if you, you have, you've heard the extra disclosures that Commissioner Mazza and Commissioner Hill made to require any additional comment from you?
Certainly not.
Okay, thank you. I will also add that when, I remember now, three years ago, I went and I looked at the property, and I got through the automatic gate and got myself locked inside. I had to call to a passing bicyclist to help me. I had to call to a passing bicyclist to help me get out over the, the wall. So I'm, I'm not sure I understand your point, John.
My point is, is all this analysis is bluff setback. There is no bluff.
Well, but, but, but that doesn't mitigate against the project, does it?
Yes, it, it has to do with, more than a lot is available for placement of the property, the house.
Okay.
Okay? It, it does not have to be shoved up into the highway.
I see what you're saying.
Okay.
Now, the, the other problem I have, and I cannot vote for this, because the site plan
review is bogus. It's what we, what the LCP requires is there's seven streets. One of them's PCH, where you may not block views, okay? And in the case of the one we did on Cliffside, we, we said he couldn't block six square feet, okay? Six square feet. Now, nobody drives down the highway like that. Nobody. You'd die, right? So ninety degrees is a weird number, okay? You're driving down the highway, the only way you can see the ocean is looking in front of you. You can't, and if you're going north, you can't look behind you while you're driving, okay? You just can't do it. So we are blocking substantial public views from the highway, and the LCP says you may not do that. And, and we have been consistent. We've denied a house on, right near the corner of Old Malibu Road and PCH. We made them move the top floor. We've done this one on Cliffside. We've been consistent all along. It's not, gee, you're only blocking ninety degrees. You're blocking a coastal view. So my point here is, the reason I'm bringing this up is, I can't find a site plan review that says, gee, you're not blocking a coastal view, and on a speci, on a named road. There's certain roads, there's different rules on. This one says you can't do it, period. And we've been consistent on that. And then...
Let's, let's, let me just, let me turn to Commissioner Marks, if he has a comment, and we'll get back to you for a motion.
Okay.
All right, so prepare your motion while...
Yeah, just, just coming to the finding related to the neighborhood character, I do have some concerns about the size relative to neighbors. Granted, there are some large homes there, several large homes there, but just, any concerns from other commissioners in terms of kind of how this compares to immediate neighbors?
I can, I can comment. I've been in almost every one of those houses. They're huge. They're movie star houses. They're on big lots, on a bluff, raised up above Coast Highway.
Okay.
And so they're...
So no concerns from...
So, well, I'd like to ask, you know, again, courtesy, I'd like to ask you a question, and that is, you've gone through this three years and missed the deadline and all this kind of stuff. I can see how this project could be approved if we didn't block coastal views. And you're only talking that one little thousand-square-foot top story here. So do you want a continuance to redesign, or do you want us to have a vote, and maybe we vote against it?
I'd have to take that up with my client. That's a rather large decision. I have an alternative to, to consider.
Well, let, okay.
All right, so let's...
You want, is your alternative something his client can decide?
It is.
What's your alternative?
The question, the question is, since there were no story polls, I couldn't really tell this clearly, but if you were to remove bedroom number three, which is on the far western side, would that, or would that not actually help with the view corridor, or is it too far below or behind the portion that's closer to the highway to improve the view at all? Because that, that would resolve your...
No, it doesn't resolve my question. You cannot block the view, not improve the view. Cannot block it, period.
It might take it from a substantial blockage to a trivial blockage.
No, it doesn't matter. No, there is no trivial. Six square feet is a trivial, we denied, okay? That's six square feet.
No, no, come on, Chris.
Adrian? Hello, by the way. Is bedroom three, sort of the westernmost, lower down one, if you took that out, does that clear up the view, or is it too far down the slope to matter?
If the architect has input on that, you can...
Yeah.
May I ask the architect?
And, and I guess my thought would be, you know, Doug, you could make bedroom two slightly larger and put the photo, some part of them somewhere else on, I don't know.
Wait, wait, wait. The issue here is they have requested a variance, and the variance is from the rule that says that if you're on the ocean side of PCH, your, your roof line cannot be above the level of the street, okay? That's, that's the issue that we're talking about here. The, the staff analysis is, even though it is above the level of the house, it's blocked by the berm, so it's, it's better this way than the other way. And that's the way the project went and was approved the first time around. If your motion is to deny the project because you deny the variance, right?
In the site plan review.
Huh? Because, but that's, that's not really the site plan. It's, it's denying the variance because the roof is higher than, than Pacific Coast Highway. That's, that's the issue that you're addressing.
Well, it's view blockage.
It is blue, blue blockage.
In the site plan review...
View blockage because that's what the Coastal Commission was trying to achieve when they put that rule in effect.
Also to clarify, though, is, is it blocking blue water view, or is it just blocking the view of the south, southward neighbor?
Blue water view.
Their, their, their goal was to avoid blocking views of the ocean, blue water views, but the way they attempted to get that was to say, you can't build higher, the top of your structure can't be higher than the level of PCH. So this project has a level that's above the level of PCH, even though, you know, it's blocked by that berm. It is, it is higher. And so that's the variance it's requesting. Your motion, I take it, would be to deny the project, or to deny the variance at least, right?
And a site plan review. But, but it doesn't make any difference, Craig. The point is, I'm going to make a motion to deny for a trivial thing. Do they want to go try to redesign to get rid of that trivial thing? Because...
Do you understand what he's, the, the change that he is suggesting?
We understand that there's two different changes that have been mentioned. So one has been to remove the bedroom that is, consists of the second story. If that's even, if that's even helpful. The other one that Commissioner Hill has made has been to remove a, a different bedroom in an attempt to improve the view corridor on one side of the house. These are two different changes.
Yeah, but remember...
We haven't, we're not willing to agree to any of them at the present time. I'd have to consult my client.
Would you prefer a continuance to...
Well, do you want five minutes?
John, just a, one at a time.
Is your client here?
My client's here, yeah.
The issue is, if you want to talk to your client, you can, you can avoid a denial. You may want a denial, but if you can't avoid a denial, if you're interested in redesigning, why don't we take five minutes, talk to your client, we'll come back at eleven thirteen, and make a decision as to whether you want a continuance.
Let's make that very clear, though. What exactly is, if we can just give that guidance, it's just for the uppermost room to be removed?
It is for any view blockage from Coast Highway.
Okay. Now, look, all right, there are two issues, let's clarify. One issue is you want a variance because the top of your highest structure is above the level of the roadway. That's, that's number one. Number two is the site plan review above eighteen feet. Portions of the building above eighteen feet from natural grade or finished grade, whichever is lower, requires a site plan review. And if there's any blockage of the, of the, actually, John's position is, if there's any blockage of blue water view as a result of the portions that are above eighteen feet, that it has to be denied on that basis as well. You understand where I am?
Yes, I do.
And I want to clarify, Commissioner Hill's question, was that an eighteen-foot-high section or no? That's what I was...
It's actually an area, that's a section that may be eighteen feet high, but is below PCH.
Okay, but if it's over eighteen feet, then Commissioner Hill has a point. Is it over eighteen feet from either natural grade or...
Nothing is over eighteen feet above natural grade.
Except for the thousand...
Or finished grade.
Or finished grade.
Yeah, twenty, right.
Natural grade or finished grade, whichever.
The bedroom that's being referred to is, is not even, is also not more than eighteen feet above finished grade.
Correct.
Correct? So the bedroom, the bedroom three that Commissioner Hill's referring to, which is on the eastern, or western side of the site?
Western side.
The western side of the site is below PCH, and it is not even eighteen feet above finished grade. And that was my question, whether it even would help.
Then I think we got it.
Right. Your question was whether it would help. So do you want us to answer that question before we go and take our break, or is it relevant at all?
So Commissioner Hill, you're saying you don't need that removal anymore? It's just Commissioner Mazza's concern?
It was a question whether it would be helpful or not.
But it seems like it's not, right?
That's their decision.
Okay, so it's just Commissioner Mazza's issue that you're dealing with?
Yeah, okay. Take a break, then? Five minutes, or ten, or...
Five minutes, yeah.
Just take it as short as possible.
Fifteen.
Yeah.[1194.33] All right, we're back in session. We're back in session. We're continuing on the agenda item five D, and, yes, sir.
I discussed this with my client, and we have to respectfully decline to change the project. It's a monumental redesign, extraordinarily impactful to the use of the property, and has a lot of moving parts. And we take that story off and try to put that square foot somewhere else, someone else is going to complain about something else. There's going to be implications with the Coastal Commission who may not agree that this is not a coastal bluff and all kinds of other things. So we have to decline. I did want to say a couple of things while I add to that. The berm is half in the right-of-way, the Caltrans right-of-way, and the high points of it are primarily within the right-of-way. So we actually cannot ever demolish the berm. Half of, it, it, it's still going to be in the right-of-way. You'd have to get Caltrans to demolish that berm. Number two...
Then there would be no harm, no foul, if we just conditioned the, the project to leave the berm the way it is, right?
That's fine with us. We have no intention of changing the berm.
I don't think we're going to go in that direction, but let's see if we...
We're going to make a motion for denial.
Thank you. Thank you.
On the variance and on the site plan review. And view blockage from coast highway, from LCP number whatever it is.
Okay, so Trevor, the motion to bring back a resolution, to direction the staff to bring back a resolution of denial?
Yes, Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Mazza, be to bring back a resolution denying it based on the variance, not making findings two, three, and four, and then the site plan review findings, number three for each of them, number, or numbers two and three. Would you include the neighborhood character and the project provide maximum feasible protection to significant public views? Are those the two site plan...
No, not neighborhood character.
Not neighborhood.
No, I'm, I'm going for the section in the LCP that says you may not block public views from...
The project provides...
Birdview, PCH.
The project provides maximum feasible protection to significant public views as required by chapter six of the LIP. Is that the one you're looking at?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So that's the motion. Is there a second?
Can I get a question before I... Can I do that?
Yeah.
Caltrans owns, owns the berm. So if we put a condition in it that you can't remove it to them, what good does that do us?
Doesn't do any harm, that was my point.
Well, I understand it doesn't.
Some of it's, some of it's owned by Caltrans, some of it's owned by them. It wouldn't do any harm. I was, I was throwing that out there because it might make you feel better, but if, if you don't care, then I don't care.
Well, no, I, I care that, look, the, I care that the berm stays there, and that we're, we're looking at this, huh?
It's only about three feet wide. Caltrans, don't think it bulldozes tomorrow morning.
You know, I just...
It's, it, it, actually, the, the way the road was cut, there's, there's a berm, but it slopes down. It's part of a continuing slope. So the idea that you could somehow remove that is...
It's only about this wide, because the back of it's forty-five degree and ninety-degree angle.
Okay. We've got a motion. I'm looking for a second on the motion.
I'll second for discussion.
More discussion. What would you like to discuss?
I'd like to know what we do to make sure that berm does not go away, because that, that is the reason why originally it was approved, because the berm blocked the view, and that's the reason we've been talking about here, we don't...
Well, for discussion, that isn't the reason why.
What?
It was this ninety-degree theory that makes no sense.
Well, the first time they approved it, I'm talking...
Same thing, same, same deal. Makes no sense that you, you drive down the highway looking ninety degrees.
Well, I, I, that's not the only way that you can see the ocean. I mean, you can see it as you're approaching, as you're leaving, you know, the view. It's not, I think Adrian was just describing it that way, because that's the maximum way that you can see the ocean, but it's not the only way. And the berm does take up a large portion of the property, and it's blocking most of what that house is going to block.
The reason why I'm making the motion is, and, and maybe you can explain this, there is no leeway in, in the Coastal Act on blocking coastal views.
Okay, look, now, you've got your motion. We've got a second for discussion purposes, but, but Commissioner Euring has raised a question, and, and the answer may influence his vote on your motion. So Mr. Henning, have you got any ideas of how you could address Mr. Euring's concern about the eternal stability of the bluff, of the berm, rather?
Well, we can't control what Caltrans does on their side of the line. We can certainly promise not to do anything to change the berm on our side. I would even say we would try to stabilize their side if they were to do something to remove it, but I guess that might mean constructing some sort of wall or something like that along where the berm would have been. But we can keep our side of the berm, of the, you know, the, the, the property line kind of between the, between the property and, and the right-of-way kind of goes right along the top of the berm. It's quite startling how close it is to the top of the berm. So you can imagine if somebody were to slice that off, then, you know, all we could really do is stabilize it on our side of the property by putting some sort of, you know, wall there. But that, we...
And just, my, my concern, look, at least the conversations I've heard and what's in the staff report, is we should approve this project because the berm blocks the view, okay? But if the berm's not there, the view's not being blocked, seems to me we've done the wrong thing.
You would accept a condition that would require the berm to remain?
Absolutely. We, I certainly have no problem with that condition.
Doesn't help us.
But Steve, let me ask you this. Why do, why do you, why do you buy into the ninety-degree? Look, you don't drive that way.
I, I, I have two comments, and that was one of my replies, was that, yeah, a driver's not looking ninety degrees, but if you're talking about scenic stuff, then you're talking about passengers, too, and passengers are surely looking. So that's, that's one point.
Okay, all right, we've got a motion, we've got a second?
What I would like to know is, is there, John is saying this is a hard-line thing, we did a six-square-foot thing that we didn't allow because it was six, is there any sort of, like, getting into the legal concept, is there a reasonable interpretation here that, that can distinguish this case from other cases so that we're not enlarging the precedent?
Yeah, I have a similar question.
What I would like to just comment is that in this particular case, we got no comments from the Coastal Commission on this at all. They're the keepers of the, of the public views and scenic impacts and things like that. And the issue here was that they could maintain the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but provide a different design of the house that met all the rules, stay below PCH, but would still block views, some blue water view, because they're staying below the level of PCH. And so this is a net benefit because of the design and in relation to the berm that provides overall a net benefit to public views. And so that's, that was the basis that the, the findings were made before, when the Commission approved the project, and that's what you could rely on today.
It's hard to pay sound, you know, it's some feet all the way out each way and block more blue water view without needing the variance or the site plan review. So if they come back with an eighteen-foot project, it would be more impactful about the blockage of view.
To, to answer Commissioner Hill's question, more than staff had, well, staff has, but I want to add to it, suffice it to say that my memory of, of, of the consistency of our determinations is a little different than John's, and, but the, the case he's talking about was one where the, it was a private view that was being obstructed, and it was a site plan review, and it was done in the early days, and, and, because I remember it, because that was my position, no, 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 it's absolutely, you cannot block a private view. In this case, my memory of the way this case came down the first time it was heard was that, as staff said, this was a better solution than the alternatives that were available to the applicant. If the applicant had spread it out, it would, it would result in more obstruction of blue water views than, than was being offered under the arrangement, and that was...
But let me add something. In both cases, and that case wasn't that long ago, it was about five years ago, these are named view corridors in the LCP. They name seven or six streets, including PCH, and they say thou shalt not. And Birdview is one of them, Cliffside is one of them, PCH is one of them, Canaan is one of them, and there's, and there's three or four more, okay? It's a different situation than making something better or making something less.
I, I have one favor, if I may?
Sure.
Director Blue, just in terms of, was there like a discussion then with Coastal about this particular project? I mean, it's kind of how you characterize what happened in the past as far as how we arrived at that kind of point in the center, rather than spreading the mass out?
I don't know if the applicant had a discussion with Coastal's staff on this or not, but my, my main, the main point of my comment was that they're clearly aware of what's on this agenda, because they've submitted a lengthy comment letter on the other project, and we didn't get a comment letter the last time this came before the Commission, nor did we get one this time.
And that, that's, that's where I was going, because, yeah, just for that fact pattern. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our position now is, the city's position is, you can, you can block the view as long as the person could redesign the house and block more of the view. Is that sort of where we are?
No, it, it was, it was, this was a net, this was a, a better solution than the alternatives would have been. And, you know, if you want to say that, to say that that's the city's position is not true, because every case stands on its own merits, but...
No, but, I mean, I'm, look, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if, if there's a, and I'm sorry, Jeff, you know, if the rule says you're not supposed to block it, and we say, okay, in this case, we're going to let him block it, and he got six feet of blockage. If, if the guy next to that comes in with seven feet of blockage, think, do we say, okay, then? And then where do you stop that process?
Well, I think the issue here is that there's this, there's a unique physical characteristic to this property in the form of this berm that blocks a big part of the frontage, and it descends from the site in a way that they could design a house that's entirely eighteen feet and then, and results in a greater view impact, which is, that's an unusual circumstance. Usually, that isn't the way things pan out.
Question.
So it's, this is, this isn't something that's going to come up every day.
If they could do more grading to reduce, to lower the whole side level, like whatever, two, three feet, whatever it would require, would that, that would be too much grading, or would they still have that within the allowable amount?
The proposed grading is just under the a thousand cubic yards allowed, so any additional grading will put them over that amount. We have had projects before the planning commission where the planning commission have made a decision about whether to allow grading that would be in excess of the a thousand cubic yards in order to protect views, or allow structures that would be slightly above, you know, road grade elevation, for example.
I want to add one point to that. The reason I mention the fact that this is not a coastal bluff is they have adequate areas they can build this house down below, and it is not a bluff. It's not a bluff. Nobody can define that as a bluff. It's extending the whole property. It's, I got two major collies on either side of it, so they could redesign.
I'm sure they can approach you to the Coastal Commission when the Coastal Commission feels differently. We've got a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Base your Mazza?
Yes.
The motion is to bring back a denial.
To bring back a denial based on the two variance findings and, and the site plan review finding three.
My thing is because they can't, we can't guarantee what's going to be there.
Well, yeah, it's your vote now.
Uh, yes.
You do it, wait until the secretary calls your name.
I apologize.
We should do it.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Jennings?
No. Order one, the motion passes, and, sorry, gentlemen, the move to, you have moved to adjourn, is there a second?
Here, second.
All in favor? Opposed? We adjourn.
See you in January.